Will the clerk please call the roll?
Herman.
Here.
Fioka.
Here.
Feldman.
Here.
Baranek.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from October ninth, two thousand and twenty five?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Uh, the motion passes unanimously. Planning Directors' report.
Thank you. Uh, no major updates, but did want to let everyone know that we met with the sign contractor this morning for the city center sign. Um, expect them to start installing next week, and hopefully that should only take a few weeks to complete. But happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for our planning director? Uh, seeing none, we'll jump, uh, straight into business. Our first item, two thousand and twenty five dash two oh six.
Thank you. Uh, this application is at twenty nine fifty Graham Road. Uh, on the zoning map, this is right next to Woodland School across the street from Oregon Trails Park. Property is one point five eight acres in zone R three, and we're here for a conditional use for a group home for persons with disabilities. Uh, that is defined as a residential facility that provides room board, personal care, habilitative or rehabilitative services, and supervision for at least nine persons with disabilities. Uh, the existing building is about sixty five hundred square feet. According to the applicant, it will contain about seventeen beds, and this is quoted from their application. Uh, the plan is to use the existing bed and bathroom units as they exist now. The residents will live there. There would be a caretaker or multiple at all times. Um, during the day, they will leave for vocational training or job placement, and meals will be brought in from another location. And this site was previously approved most recently as an eight-unit apartment building in two thousand and twenty, and before that, it was used as an assisted living facility. The supplemental regulations with this use, uh, there are three of them. Uh, number one state saying that, uh, facilities shall accommodate no more than twelve beds per acre. Based on the one point five eight acres, they can have up to nineteen beds, so they comply with this requirement. Uh, number two just states that fire code has to be met. They will get compliance or verification of that compliance during the building permit phase. And number three, um, the use shall not change character of the area, uh, create congestion, and no event shall the facility be closer than five hundred feet from where another such facility is located. And there are no other group homes within five hundred feet of this property. So that's all I have for this review. Uh, the applicant did submit old building plans and site plan if they need to reference that, but happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for the planning director before we invite the applicant to speak? Mr. McIntyre.
Mr. Count, what's the property that's like kind of right across the street? Isn't that a group home?
Uh, I believe that is a nursing home.
I believe it's a group home.
After I checked the records in this area.
Nursing home?
I believe that's how it was proven. I checked the records. I didn't see a, uh, group home used.
Can we verify that before tonight's council meeting? Because I thought that was a group home. And then my other question, obviously, this is just conditional zoning. Was there notification notified? I don't, I'm sure you were aware of the issues with this property that we had.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty or twenty twenty one or whenever it may have been. So were the residents in the villas notified of this?
Yes, uh, we had a few at planning commission meeting, and they had questions. I think the applicant addressed all their concerns.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could verify the property across the street, because it was my understanding that that was considered a group home.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that now.
Other questions? Mr. Feldman.
Yeah, can you, uh, pull your microphone a little closer, Mr. Count? I'm having trouble hearing you, so, um. The road in and out, who maintains, plows, takes care of?
Uh, that's a, that's a private easement, uh, shared access between this property and the property directly behind it. So I'm sure it's a shared access agreement between the private property owners.
So the answer is they're both gonna do it?
I assume. I haven't seen the easement language for that, but I assume.
Okay, that's all, Mr. Uh, thanks.
Any other questions? Uh, we now invite the applicant, uh, to speak if you wish. Uh, please, uh, come state, uh, your name and, uh, address.
Good afternoon or evening. Jonathan Marshall with Four Points Architectural Services. We are the architect for the client, twenty eight fifty South Arlington Road in Akron. Pretty much everything that was stated is correct. The, the road as we, uh, the way that the road currently works is that it is owned by the, um, apartment building in the rear, and it is an easement. So they own that and maintain that. We did have some conversations after the planning commission meeting with the villa. Some villa owners, they expressed that they were upset with the current state of it. Um, the owner of this property doesn't tend to, to work with the, the apartment building as well as, uh, owners of the villas to see if something can be done about that, but that is not their ownership. The building itself, as Zach had stated, you know, from the beginning, this was built as like a nursing home. It has largely remained the same layout since then. Last used as an apartment building. It will be, it's fully fire suppressed and full fire alarm. Residents will stay overnight. They'll have caretakers twenty four seven at the property. They will leave during the day to go do some adult, uh, skills training, which the owner also owns that business, which is down the road on Fish Creek. They'll come back. They'll have their meals brought into this location, and then they'll stay there overnight and repeat.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for the applicant? Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you. I saw, what I asked at that house was a group home across the street. You, I saw you nod yes. So you're aware that it is a group.
Our firm designed that building. Um, it's over five hundred feet from this building. I don't know how the zoning language reads for that. That is, uh, Summit Housing owns that building, so they work through Summit DD. That's a four-unit independent living. So while there are people there that have developmental, developmental disabilities, they are able to live independently. So there's people that come in and check up on them.
I know, but our code, I think, Mr., if you go back to the other slide, Mr. Count.
There is five hundred.
It says five hundred foot, so is it, is it or is it not classified as a group home?
Well, we looked up the last approved use from two thousand and sixteen, which was an assisted living facility.
It is, it was approved as a, I thought it was a group home.
You're saying across Graham Road?
Right. Yeah, this property was approved as an assisted living facility in two thousand and sixteen.
Well, I guess I answered my question. I was under the impression it was a, it was a group home.
In my opinion, it functions and as far as the building code goes, kind of functions as a, just an apartment building.
I'm not worried about what it functions as. I'm worried about the classification of it, because the code says if it's closer.
Sure.
It looks like five hundred, it's within that five hundred feet. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any, uh, do we have a motion to move this on to tonight's council agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, that carries unanimously and will appear on tonight's agenda. Two thousand and twenty five dash two oh seven.
Thank you. This next application is at Saint Cobain on Fish Creek, uh, thirty eight forty Fish Creek Road. This property is nine and a half acres and is zoned I one, limited industrial, and this application is for a sign variance. So the sign will be placed on the north side of the wall. Uh, one include a street view image from Fish Creek. Uh, we're gonna drive, it's on the right side of the building. We're gonna drive around Fish Creek. Um, it is significantly screened from the existing trees on that property. Uh, but the building is about three hundred and fifty feet from the street. And there are three existing wall signs at ninety four or approximately ninety four square feet, uh, twenty five square feet and fifty four square feet, bringing a total to a hundred and seventy four. Our code allows a maximum of one hundred square feet. This is the sign as being proposed, so they are increasing that nonconformity. The sign is twenty seven point one square feet in area, which brings a total to two hundred and one square feet. So there's a variance request for one hundred and one square feet for the allowable sign area. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for the planning director? Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you. Under the new zoning code rewrite that we're considering, would this still require a variance?
No.
It wouldn't. And I guess, you know, the sign on the building, is it, is it essentially, I mean, I've been, I've been there and toward the facility, everything else. Is it, they're looking for the variance because of how far the property sits from the roadway in order to be able to legibly see, or at least to, to read the sign? I guess what was their rationale for increasing or needing this size?
Uh, the need for this sign, I believe, is just, I, I believe Saint Cobain acquired Norpro, so they just wanted to indicate that on the building. But our code is, it's one and a half times the length of the building, up to a hundred square feet, period.
Okay, are there any other properties within this part of this side of town that we've, that we've approved variances for, such as this, for what they're proposing?
I'm sure there are. I have to look into the records, though.
Okay. And what was planning commission's reason for denial?
I believe they recommended approval.
They did? I was looking at it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. That's all.
Any other questions for the planning director, or do we have the applicant here if they wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll undertake a motion to move this on to tonight's council agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, that passes unanimously to appear on tonight's council agenda. Next, uh, two thousand and twenty five dash two oh eight.
Thank you. Uh, so I'll do a quick introduction, and then Hema from Housel Levine will do a presentation. Uh, so this is for the zoning code update. Uh, this process began at March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty four, when we, went into contract with Housel Levine, which is headquartered in Chicago, and they are an award-winning planning and zoning consulting firm. They've worked with over four hundred communities around the country updating their plans and zoning codes. Um, and the current planning and zoning code has several issues which were addressed by the diagnostic report we did back in two thousand and twenty two, uh, which highlighted lack of organization, missing definitions, uh, discouraging housing diversity, restraining commercial code requirements, and inability to keep pace with modern zoning and planning considerations. So the goal of this project has been to address those concerns and those issues and to create a user-friendly, um, code that reduces barriers to development, promotes sustainability, and ensures compliance with federal and state laws. Um, early on the process, the consultant had several meetings and presentations with department heads, uh, including then planning commission, steering committee, and city council to get their feedback. Um, steering committee was set up with eleven members, and I want to make sure I specifically thank them, um, for everyone's effort on the committee and all their long hours reviewing the code. Uh, those meeting, those members included Mario Fioka, Kyle Herman, Kyle Feldman, Feldman from city council, Dan Basic, and Jeff Wagner from planning commission, Greg Seifert from Board of Zoning Appeals, Jason Gates from Commission on Inclusion, Patrick Crawford from Parks Board, Andy Beratang from Urban Forestry Commission, Kay Arnold, a local business owner, and Mike Merle from Fog Business Building Methods. Uh, so we've, we had several meetings with steering committee. We had seven meetings with them lasting sometimes many hours. Um, I know everyone, by the end, it was probably stick a look in the code. Um, but I appreciate all their hard work on the, on the reviews and their expertise. Uh, the consultant also held stakeholder meetings with local business owners, local institutions, commercial developers, residential developers, architects, real estate brokers, and other professionals. Uh, around the same time, during the summer of two thousand and twenty four, there was a community survey throughout the summer where we received three hundred and seventy responses from the public. We also had a public open house on June fifth, two thousand and twenty four. Since that time, uh, we've just been working on drafting the code, uh, through several iterations and steering committee meetings. Drafting the code and staff reviews, we've probably amounted to two hundred hours in reviewing the code. I had, again, seven steering committee meetings, and on top of that, approximately forty individual meetings with those members. Uh, for boards and commissions, we met with planning commission several times, city council, including individual meetings, uh, urban forestry commission, and the Board of Zoning Appeals to get everyone's feedback. And on top of that, we've also had a library open house for the public as well as park pop-ups to discuss the zoning code. And then we had our final public open house on September twenty second, two thousand and twenty five, and that brings us to today. Um, we had our planning commission meeting last week where they recommended approval of the repeal and replace of the zoning code, and, um, we're here for our first reading at city council. So with that, um, I'll introduce Hema from Housel Levine, and she'll walk you through the major updates. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the detailed introduction on the project, Zach. So we all have gathered here tonight, um, to walk you all through all the chapters, um, of the zoning code, what the major changes have been done to all the chapters. Uh, the steering committee and city staff have looked at it throughout this year, uh, and we have also like posted, uh, the drafts, uh, throughout the year for public review. The agenda would include what the major changes have been done to the, to the chapters. So the introduction on the project real quick, uh, the, the purpose of the zoning code update is to make sure the zoning code in future aligns with the comprehensive plan, the vision of the city, and make sure, uh, it's user-friendly to everyone to read, uh, and it has objective design and development standards. All the users mentioned in the code are modernized according to the current and future market and to make sure the steam, to streamline the approval process and also make sure it complies with the state and federal regulations. So what is the relationship with the comprehensive plan to the zoning code? So the comprehensive plan is an aspirational document. It provides a roadmap to where the city would like to go, but it does not provide a regulatory approach to it. So that's where the zoning code comes in the picture, because it provides the treat to that, uh, vision of the city. So it regulates and create rules for the development, uh, that must adhere to the, uh, city regulations and all the comprehensive plan, uh, recommendation, um, aren't binding unless requirement are established in the code. All right, the scope, we are on the seventh step of the scope of work. Uh, we have gone through all the six steps, and the seventh one is making sure the final draft of the zoning code. So in the proposed zoning code, we have fourteen chapters. The first to fourth chapters, the first one is about general provision throughout the zoning code. Uh, second and fourth chapter is about base overlay and use district. Chapter five to nine are about all the objective design and development standard throughout the city that would be applicable throughout the city. Um, and tenth would be the sign standards. Eleventh is the flood plain. Twelfth is, um, review and decision-making and enforcement procedure. Third, thirteenth is non-conformities, and fourteenth, the last one, is definitions of all the terms. The first chapter is general provisions. So the purpose of this project is to, uh, the purpose of this chapter is to make sure, uh, that we have established the purpose and applicability throughout the zoning code. Um, and it clarifies the connection between the code and the zoning map. Um, so the structure is going to be title zoning map and all the purpose applicability and improvement permitting, uh, requirement throughout the code. We have not made a major changes, changes to this chapter, just taken the existing language from the existing zoning code and just cleaned it up to make sure it's easy to read and follow. The second chapter is zoning districts. So the purpose of this chapter is to make sure, um, the zoning districts are consolidated and simplified into one chapter. Currently, in the existing code, uh, it's in, it's in multiple section of eleven forty five, and there are like multiple chapters, uh, for zoning districts. Um, and most of the design standards are not mentioned together. So in this, uh, zoning district structure, we have established base district into one chapter and have provided bulk and dimensional standards into tables and diagrams for residential mixed-use industrial and miscellaneous like public and institution and, um, park. So the table here, you see that, uh, this is current base district versus proposed base districts. Um, for residential districts, uh, we have not made major revision to the name, just made sure it shows what the intensity of the, um, single, intensity of the residential district. For example, for R one, it is going to be a low density. For R two is mid-density, and R three is high-density. And we have also revised the purpose of the districts to make sure it come, uh, aligns with the comprehensive plan of the city. Uh, we have removed the RB residential business because it, um, allows us small business and small office types of uses. And since after the COVID nineteen, these types of, uh, uses of like having a specific dedicated districts to this uses would not be attractive enough. So we will be allowing this, um, small business and office into some of these commercial district, but it would not be needed to have a specific district to that. So for commercial district, we noticed that from C two to C six, there were multiple uses where, um, same uses were included in, uh, these districts. So we consolidate them into three commercial district. The C one would be neighborhood commercial. This would have uses that would, uh, relate to the community, and for C two, the district, this would have a little bit more denser, uh, service kind of uses. And C three is going to be more denser like auto, auto-oriented uses, the C three district. Um, for industrial district, there were two district in the existing code, uh, but they have similar types of uses. And according to the steering committee feedback we receive, we consolidated that into one industrial district. Uh, no major changes to conservation district, just added that to the zoning code to make sure all the uses within that are permitted in the use, uh, standards. For PI district, this is the proposed district. Um, all the city, um, all the government, city hall, or school, or educational facilities type of uses would be included in this, uh, proposed public incident institutional district. Um, in PD major plan development, I'm gonna talk about it later because it has more detail to it. So this is the existing zoning map. You see that, uh, there are lots of zoning district overlapped on each other. Uh, overlay district, which is very hard to read currently. Uh, we are proposing to remove some of these overlay districts be- because they are not, um, trendy anymore, but we will be keeping some of them. Um, I'll talk about them in couple of next slides, which one we will be keeping. So this is the proposed zoning map, very clean, easy to read. Uh, we will be keeping the mudbrook and seasons overlay districts as is, um, according to the existing, and proposing the mixed-use overlay districts and just, all right. So this is the table that shows the residential district bulk and dimensional standards. Uh, we have not made any changes to the lot area. According to the steering committee feedback we receive, just made some changes to the, uh, front, uh, street and interior setback to make sure it aligns with the development on ground, and also provided transition height setback to make sure, the language for transition height setback to make sure if the subject property, for example, if the residential property is close to the commercial or more, um, denser one, there are, there is enough buffer and privacy maintained between these two structures. Similar in C districts, uh, we noticed that the lot width for these districts are, I would say, I think it's one twenty feet was the lot width, which is, um, too much for the, uh, these commercial districts that would, that might invite more parking in front yard of the commercial district. So we reduced the lot width to fifty feet to make sure, um, it aligns with the on-ground development and also make sure we are not inviting unnecessary parking spaces in the area. This is the industrial district. As I mentioned, we consolidated the industrial district into one district and have provided all the lot standards, yard building side, uh, building standards, everything into one, uh, table. So it's easy to read. Uh, and for commercial and industrial, I also wanted to highlight, uh, that we have provided a note that minimum setback for, from the, any property within the commercial or industrial would, should have forty feet when it's adjacent to any residential district. So miscellaneous district table would include all conservation and PI public and institution, um, table. Uh, this would have lots standard similar to other three districts I mentioned, uh, yard setback and building standards. And PI is proposed one, and we, uh, noticed that, we observed that the smallest parcel in the public and institution, uh, area is two acres. So the smallest lot is two acre. That's why the minimum lot area is two acre. The major plan development is again a proposed district. Uh, it provides opportunity for the large-scale, multi-phase kind of development to promote the creativity and, um, invite the innovative design standards and allow for the development for site-specific zoning regulation in exchange for providing measurable benefit to the community like affordable housing, accessible design, and environmental sustainability. The chapter three is overlay district standards. As I mentioned, uh, we, we are proposing to remove some of the overlay district because they are not, um, they're underutilized and may not be, um, utilized anymore. So if the purpose of this overlay districts is to make, chapter is to make sure we are establishing overlay district of the city, including their district-specific standards and relation to underlying base district. So this chapter includes mixed-use overlay, which is a proposed one again, the minor plan development overlay, the proposed one, and existing mudbrook and seasons overlay districts. So the first one is mixed-use overlay districts. Uh, this is going to be allowed in a certain corridor of the city, um, just to support pedestrian-oriented mixed-use development along the Darrow Road, uh, north of Kent Road and south of Graham Road. So all the uses will, will be, um, allowed as limited use within this area, um, especially the residential one. And other one would be permitted or either conditional. So, all right. So these are the users that will be allowed in the M U O district. So, as you could see, um, on this map, that the base district mostly includes all the commercial districts. So the list here is more intense uses that would not be, um, allowed in C one, this as a base district. And, uh, the applicant also have option to keep the base district as it is and not to go with M U O district. If they would like to, um, with, um, if they would like to go with M U O district, they can definitely add this as an overlay on top of their property. So minor plan development, uh, plan overly district, and again, one proposed, uh, district. This is, uh, provided to make sure the developer can request the deviation from the base district. For example, if a base district is not supportive of a certain development, they can ask for a minor plan overlay and, but it needs to be make sure, uh, the minor plan property is lesser than ten acre. Otherwise, it would not be qualified for the minor plan overly district. The planning commission and city council approves the site plan with site development allowance based on the modification standards that would be environmentally sustainable design, affordability, accessible design, and other. As I mentioned, the existing overlay seasons road overlay and mudbrook would remain as it is. We just may, uh, maybe we are retaining the existing language as it is. Uh, no major changes to this. Just made sure it is clean and easy to read for everyone, just consistency with the formatting of the chapter. The next one is U standards. So the purpose of the U standard is to make sure we are allowing modernized land uses, uh, into the city and consolidate, um, the principal accessory temporary kind of uses into one single chapter. So it's easy to, easy to use and follow, and also add, added the supportive, um, supplemental standards uh, to improve the review and approval process. The structure would include, uh, the principal accessory and temporary use and their supplemental standards. The major changes in the residential districts would include allowing some of the missing middle housing, which is, um, dwelling duplex, triplex, quadplex, and townhomes, but they would be allowed, um, as an, as a limited use. Quadplex and townhomes, but they would be allowed um as an as a limited use in a certain area, for example, a la- on Kent, Darrow. Fishery, Ram, Stowe, Hudson, Norton or uh wherever the bus routes on the metro bus system map. Uh they are also allowed in area where they are close to thirty three hundred feet from two or more existing similar types of dwellings. On or on non-residential dwell uh districts or multifamily dwelling, for example, the similar types of uh if they are close to similar types of. Uh dwelling units and on the similar street. The other major uh proposed uses includes the commercial industrial for uh such as adult use cannabis facility. Uh state of Ohio um allowing uh the adult use cannabis facility as a permitted use. Um from December seven twenty twenty-three, so we have included that as a as a allowed use, as a conditionally allowed use. In the city, so that includes the facility, dispensary, uh cultivator, processing and testing lab. And also microbrewery, winery, distillery, co-working space, tobacco retailer. Artisan manufacturing, vehicle service station, major and minor. But we have also included some of the restrictions uh to these uses to make sure. Uh we are maintaining the privacy and any needed requirement, for example, the buffer. Uh for the car wash, we have added a language that it uh cannot be located one mile from other existing car wash. And if it's close to residential districts, we have also included the time requirement that it can only be open between seven A M to nine P M. To maintain the privacy and safety standards. For the gas station, the proposed gas station cannot be within uh existing one mile of the location of gas station. For tobacco retailer, um it should have one mile distance from the existing tobacco retailer plus five hundred additional feet. From school, place of workshop, library, playground and park. And it's not included here, but um if any retailer is selling more than twenty-five percent of their sale is coming from tobacco. They have to declare their store as tobacco retailer, the that's also mentioned in the code language. For the uh adult use cannabis facility, it has to be one mile from existing plus five hundred feet of school. Place of workshop, library, playground, park and opioid treatment facility. And there there would be only one adult use um cannabis facility allowed throughout the city. And no drive-through services or outdoor storage would be allowed in this facility as well. So, this is the list of accessory uses we have included and some of them I'm going to highlight, uh which is coop, um beekeeping. Public art and accessory event menu and some of the solar energy collection system. So, the coop would have the supplementary standards that would mainly include having a twenty-five feet setback from all property lines. Um and the coop area would need to be included towards the allowed total accessory building area in that specific district. And for beekeeping, uh it has there has to be minimum fifty feet of setback from the lot line or any right-of-way within that district. And also like it's only allowed in residential district and need to follow any state regulations. Um and need to make sure it's only in rear side of the lot and in not in any other. Front lot or side side lot, side yard, I'm sorry. So, um we also saw that the city is working on um including public art language. So, it has it will be included in the zoning code that the any multifamily, non-residential, multi-multi-use. Kind of development would need to include the public art where it is needed to kind of encourage public art throughout the city. The accessory event venue uh would need to be included in any non-residential and if it's included in residential. It the lot has to be above one acre. For solar energy collected system, we have included the canopy, ground-mounted. And uh wind energy. Alright, the next one is temporary uses, we have also included some new um temporary uses like farm stands, food trucks. Mobile retail and service, special even event proposed to um I'm sorry, special events. So, um the uses that are called out as permitted would be permitted without having to go through any temporary use permit. Uh and the T would require a temporary use permit, we have included um supplemental regulations for all of these to make sure. Any of the temp- temporary use permit would need to follow that specific language. So, the chapter five is subdivision standards. So, specifically for this chapter, we have not made any major changes of the existing code language have been maintained as it is. This would be reviewed through a city engineer and um yeah, also throughout the code revisions, we have be. We have been reviewing this through the city engineer and refining the language as well. So, the purpose of this chapter is to make sure we create the orderly planning and development facilitated for the re-subdivision of large tracks into smaller. Smaller parcel of land and make sure the urban development occurs within the city standards, silver water and other urban services and also protect the. Environmental resources, the structure would include how the city segment would be large, street design easy and how the site would be improved. Um and conservation design for the residential districts. So, this table here shows that if any new development comes in uh into the city, then you need to follow a specific cross-section elements. For example, if the if the project is close to arterial, they need to, the there is a diamond on the table. It means it requires these elements on both sides of the street. Uh the cross mark shows it only requires only if identified in adopted city plan. Um and and there is one more for the optional, the cross with the circle that shows the optional cross street section element. This is to make sure um all the development moving forward would have all modes of transportation within the. Area it is getting developed. The roadway stub, it replaces the temporary cul-de-sac and make sure there is a safety and connectivity maintained throughout the lards. And also required connection to existing roadway and uh this needs to make sure the turnaround meets the Ohio fire code. And any administrative adjustment would be available uh to this, yeah, alright. So, next one is conservation design standards. The conservation design standards would only be allowed within the R one, R two, R three districts. Where it's needed to protect the environmental character of the specific area, so that the developer can get in uh intense. Reg- intense uh requirement into the specific area and uh some amount of the land could be preserved. For example, the subdivision type that allows clustering development in exchange for preserving the thirty thirty percent of development side. As a permanent conservation. It also allows um expansion of the housing types, for example, if a certain type of housing is not allowing R one would be allowed through conservation district. Because they are conserving a specific amount of land as permanent natural area, so they would get as a credit a tensor development. Within the specific area. So, the sixth one is general development standards, so we observed that the city does not have a development. Objective development standard for some of the district, for example, the commercial district, but moving forward, the proposed. Code would have the general development standard that will be applicable applicable throughout the city in all the districts. To make sure the zoning document is objective enough and that is applicable throughout the city. So, the purpose of this chapter is to make sure we promote and the efficient and streamlined development throughout the city. And ensure the consistency within the districts of the similar corridors, support over orderly sustainable growth in line with the city's. Uh planning vision and encourage the creation of cohesive and integrated neighborhoods. So, this chapter would include the fence, wall, screening, vision triangle, outdoor lighting. And some of the engineering stuff and development maintenance standards. The first one is fence and wall, so fence and wall um is provided to make sure this privacy is maintained. In in some of the districts, for example, residential, commercial, industrial have been divided into a specific table and percentage requirement. To make sure the OPCT is added to the district if it's close to any other properties or the street. The screening, uh the screening were would be applied to some of the uses that would not look attractive from the street when we look at them. For example, base receptacle, ground or wall-mounted building, roof-mounted building and loading docks or truck parking areas. So, the next one is outdoor lighting, um we have included outdoor lighting to make sure uh we are providing enough. Um Kelvin for some of the areas and we are not creating light when it's needed like. We are keeping up keeping away the ni- light pollution when it's not needed in a residential district especially. Also, we have included a minimum foot candle requirement for the property line, parking area and gas canopy to make sure. Again, we are not creating a light pollution and the foot foot candle is specified in the zoning code. The next one is multi-building development standards, um as you can see in the picture, um we are encouraging to al- allow. The mu- this will be applied when the multiple buildings will be included in a specific uh project like multiple primary buildings. Uh so, the parking would be um added to a rear of the rear of the project, so if the the building facades are visible. And there is a connection, this really helps to create the positive positive connections between the secondary internal access drive and primary access drive. With that com- common open space and does not create that eye-soaring parking lots in the front when you are driving or walking through a certain development. So, the next one is building design standards, um again, uh we observed that in the city's existing code. There is no objective commercial design standards, it only has um review process and outdoor lighting. But doesn't provide a specific objective design standards uh for the for districts. So, the purpose of this building design standard is to ensure we maintain the physical character of the proposed development and it's compatible with the context of the surrounding. And also preserve the visual context um of the ci- city's streetscape and also create unique and inspiring place to support the pedestrian. Experience and promote the economic vitality. So, the structure of this chapter would include um multifamily, mixed-use and non-residential building design standards. Town home building design standards and building design standards for duplex, triplex, quadplex. And something to note that um we are not proposing the design standards for industrial district. So, this chapter would include facade articulation, how the roof would be designed for commercial versus residential. Um and the material requirement for residential, town home and us, I'm sorry, not residential. Multifamily mixed-use, non-residential, town home and this mu- missing middle homes. So, we made sure the tier-one materials are maintained, um they are similar throughout this uh various sections to make sure. We are maintaining the character and not overlapping within this uh tier-to-tier-two materials and there is a certain flow. Within the districts. Alright, so the next one is building entryway design, this would be mostly applicable to the commercial entryway, we have provided specific. Various levels of how the entryway would be designed, uh this applies to each building entrance on front or street-facing elevation. And it must include one or more of these listed designs. This is not all the, this is not everything, there are the more entryway designs, but this is the example of some of those entryway designs from the code. We have also included the glazing standard to make sure uh some of this M U O district and commercial districts have a specific percentage of the. Glazing and uh it's not creating the eye-soaring amount of glazing material. Alright, the next one is chapter eight, social gathering and open space, tree preservation and landscape standards. The purpose of this chapter is to make sure you're preserving the character of the city, um we provide the social gathering space that activated space. For the residential park, residential, commercial developments and improve the environmental quality in the city. And minimize the off-site impacts, noise, glare, etc. So, this chapter would include the open standard, open space standards requirements, social gathering, residential park space requirement. The tree preservation and landscape and buffer standards. Social gathering space uh would have the point system, for example, for the residential project. If it's less than acre, it would nee- need a seven points and we have also included the improvement types, the amenities to make sure. The specific development is activated with very or this diverse list of um amenities. So, for example, if a specific development is uh below one acre and they need seven points, they can choose some of these amenities from here. To add up to that seven point. The transition landscape is provided to make sure we are creating a transition between uh it creates the transition between two different developments. For example, if a certain development is close to multifamily or public institution where more privacy needs to be maintained. They would need a higher quality of buffer uh for the autom- automotive or residence uh industrial, they would need a lesser. Uh kind of buffer with less amount of trees. We have also included a na- natural landscape area language because uh we we received a notice from. Notification from some of the residents that um the tall grass ordinance limits the grass and weeds to eight inches only. And some of the residents wanted to keep the wild yards as it is in their uh yard. So, we also are regulating that in the proposed code, so new regulations would and will allow the wa- native or wild. Landscaping outside of the required landscape area and cover that that covers up to fifty percent of the yard space. But that must maintain fifteen feet setback from the property line. So, the chapter nine is access and mobility standards, this would include the access and uh parking requirements throughout the city. So, the purpose of this chapter is to make sure um the safety of all this transportation system, support the efficient movement of the people. Multi-modal interconnected transportation network, minimize any negative impacts and provide adequate of street parking requirements. As you can see, this chapter would include the parking driveway, loading bicycle parking trails, pedestrian walkways. We have included a table uh in the chapter to make sure it meets the industry requirements and we are not. Um allowing more than needed amount of parking space in all of the uses. And would this would also include uh bicycle parking for multifamily, mixed-use and non-residential. A short-term parking for non-residential developments and long-term for multifamily developments. The next chapter is sta- sign standards. So, we have the purpose of this chapter is to enhance the physical appearance of the city, create the attractive and economic and business climate, reduce the sign distraction. Eliminate any hazard or by unsafe signs and avoid any cancelling out effect of the adjacent sign. This the structure of the chapter would include the general provisions, the sign measurement that would be applicable throughout um all the signs. Permitted versus uh permitted and allowed signs, the general applicability for the sign standards and permanent uh and temporary signs. And the prohibited content, also the master sign plan. So, if the any um land use has solid dot, it means um that sign is permitted. And if it needs, if it has a just a circle, no solid dot, it means it um it's approved without a permit. So, the solid would need a permit and just the circle would not need permit and if you see a blank space, that means the specific sign is not allowed. In that land use. So, we have included uh images, like pictures of various types of um all the types of permanent and temporary signs. That will be allowed in the city to make sure the applicant really understands how the effect would be on the specific building of that. Um specific sign, for example, any sign projection, how would be, how much would be the sign area allowed? Maximum projection, how how big the the sign would be and the maximum area. Alright, so the next chapter is floodplain development standards, uh we have not made any maj- major changes to this chapter again, just to make sure. The the language is easy to read and follow and everything that's uh included in various subsections of the code is um combined. And consolidated into one single chapter, so it's really uh it's easy to read moving forward and all the definitions. Uh from this chapter have been included into the definitions chapter. The next one is review, decision-making, enforcement and procedures. The purpose of this chapter is to make sure um this uh we have, we are ma- creating review and decision-making procedure. As steamline process, easy to review and follow and um address all the. Review and decision-making procedure as steamline process, easy to review and follow and address all the enforcement and penalties throughout the city. Alright, so majorly this chapter will have three different types of review processes. The first one would be. On the application types that would be approved through administratively, for example, through. Planning director, city engineer or floodplain administrator. The purpose of the, so, okay, I skipped something. We have also included administrative adjustment as an administrative review process to make sure. Some of these variances, variance process can be removed, for example, allowed encroachment, access, accessory building distance. Setback, fence height, light standards, roofline articulation. We have included objective language in all of the chapter, throughout the chapters to make sure we, we give the, you give applicant a specific. Adjustment to a specific standards and it's like easy to follow. That, that is why it is administrative and not need to review through a hearing process. So the next one is a specific type of application that needs to be reviewed through, reviewed and approved, approved through planning commission. Which is subdivision major preliminary plan, master sign plan and sign variance. And this is a list of projects that need to be reviewed and approved through city council. Something to mention on these, the major versus minor site plan, the minor site plan would be. Less than twenty thousand square feet and major site plan would be more than twenty thousand square feet. For any planned development, major versus minor, if a site is ten thousand, I'm sorry, the site is less than ten acre, that would be. Minor plan development and the ten, about ten acre would be major plan development. Alright, so the next one is non-confirmed this chapter. We have, again, we have taken the existing language as it is not major changes have been done. Just make sure it's easy to read and follow. This, this chapter would include all the non-confirming lot, building structures. Site elements, signs and uses to make sure we acknowledge the legal status of non-confirming lots and make sure. Moving forward, these non-confirming structures would be allowed, continue to be allowed. As they are, or if they need to make any changes, they need to comply with the proposal. For chapter fourteen, the last one is definitions. This chapter would include all the terms used throughout the, throughout the code. Include also the land uses that we have provided in chapter four. For example, if a specific use like retail store, like what that would be exactly, that would be mentioned in this specific chapter. If the term is not defined in the definitions, then it shall be defined in its everyday meaning to determine by its dictionary use. So the structure of this chapter would be each letter wise, for example, all the, all the definitions start with A would be in the A section. B would be in the B section. We have also included how the, how something, the height should be measured or the area. For example, the rule of construction and interpretation to make sure it's, it's easy to understand the applicant, how something should be measured. The next step. Is just to walk you through what we have done so far. Zach already gave you a detailed information about. The steering committee meeting and public outreach. Just wanted to let you know that we did the public outreach, the open house. On September twenty-two and had a planning commission hearing last week, October fourteenth and we are on the first reading here. And that's it. Thank you so much. Happy to take any of your questions.
Thank you for the comprehensive presentation of our comprehensive zoning update. Thank you to everyone who contributed to this project over the past nineteen months. Do we have any questions from council at this point? On the whole, yes. Ms. Feldman.
Just a simple one. Zach, when was our last update? Have we had one?
There was an update in two thousand and seven, which seemed like more of an organizational update.
So you classify this as a rewrite.
Right.
So I, I'm not saying zoning code update, I'm saying zoning code rewrite.
Right.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Trump.
Thank you, Mr. Feldman. Mrs. Coffee.
Thank you. I have some, is that okay? I'm not on this committee. I have some questions and comments. First of all, one of them is cannabis. I know that was changed from, the barrier was changed to a thousand, from a thousand feet to five hundred. I still, you know, my personal stance on it is that I, I look at Hudson, they banned it. I'm not sure. I know people voted on cannabis. Two years ago, but it was to legalize it. I don't think it was necessarily to have it in your backyard. So I, I think. For me personally, I just don't think that we need it in the city. And I think if we did, I think I would want everyone to vote on that. Because I don't think what they voted on was that. And then the dwelling, I know was previously. Six units per acre for multifamily and I just am concerned about. Higher density with the infrastructure, you know, we're talking about another water tower and I just am concerned about. Our city's infrastructure allowing that housing. So I like the way it was before when it was six units per acre. Another question with the agriculture, how does that change? So I know with chicken coops, there's a twenty-five foot setback. And with bees, there's a fifteen foot setback now. So previously it was not as defined, but for our residents now, how would that change for them?
Yeah, so exist, so we don't have any beekeeping regulations currently. That's something that we get a lot of complaints on. So we're adding some regulations about the number of bees based on the lot size and setbacks from property lines. And then for chicken coops, right now, we have to review them as just an accessory structure. So depending on the size. They typically only have to be six feet from a property line if it's under five hundred square feet. There's no limit on the number of animals they can hold. Or anything else like that. So with chicken coop regulations. For the number of animals, it would depend on the size of the coop in the run area. And the, like you said, it'd be twenty-five foot setback from property lines, that'd be in the backyard. So just basic regulations for chicken coops and also maintenance regulations.
Okay. And then, let me see what else. Thank you for that. Another question, Zach, with signs, I know we spoke about commercial signs. Limiting the number, what did you decide on that?
Yeah, we discussed that with steering committee. Initially, you know, we talked about limiting the number of tenant panels to four tenant panels on a. Multifamily, commercial district. We agreed to limit it to the maximum number of six. And again, that purpose is to reduce, you might see those large tenant panels, they got twenty company, you know, business names on the sign. It's impossible to read, drive by. So. The intent is just to reduce that, just prioritize quality signs.
Okay, thank you. My, because I just wanted every, if there's a plaza with a lot of businesses, I wanted to make sure businesses were included. That was my only concern there. And then the processes of coming to council, are any of those different?
No, I think the only difference is with sign variances. We've mentioned this council before. I know you guys are tired of seeing sign variances. We make planning commission the determining factor on that. But also in the code, if a sign is denied, the applicant could appeal to council for that. But if it's approved, planning commission would approve it of sign variance. Council would see. Planning commission and council would see use variances, which is being added to the code. So in cases where it doesn't make sense to rezone a property, but the zoning district, district doesn't accommodate what they want to use it for, they could apply for use variance. So you would see that as well.
Okay, thank you. Another question, halfway house. Was there a halfway house in the previous? I couldn't find it.
It is in there and there, there are, there are legal requirements against banning halfway houses specifically with the ADA act and FHA. So we cannot prohibit halfway houses as a persons with disabilities.
Sure, okay. I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you. With that being said, doesn't group home with disabilities have the same rehabilitative services and things of that nature? Isn't that defined in the same thing? You're saying a halfway house, we can't ban them because of disabilities, but we're not. We're allowing them through group homes with disabilities.
Right, right.
Do we have both of those definitions? Is a halfway house definition defined and a group home defined, it's the same thing?
So halfway houses and group homes, those are, under a new definition, I think it's a community residential services. And it differs to the state definition of that. But that definition does include halfway houses. So we're not proposing to ban them, they're conditional. R two and R three districts and I think C, C three districts.
Okay, and then last year when this council voted on, when we took up the moratorium and then we took up adult use cannabis. It was planning commission that came to this council and recommended a thousand feet from schools. In this whole process, what, what changed their mind? It was their proposal. So why did they change their position from a thousand feet to five hundred feet from schools?
I think discussing with them, I, I think their main concern was the possibility of how many dispensaries or facilities could be in the city. So under this regulation, you know, they have to be a mile apart and our code is specific, you can have one facility in the city. I think that addressed their concerns as a better alternative to having a thousand feet from, from properties and, you know, applying for a bunch of variances.
Okay, and then I, car washes, it says they can't be within a mile apart. So under the new code, how many car washes would be permitted in the city of Stell?
Three.
Three?
Yeah, which is same effect as what we have now, one per ten thousand. But best practice is to do it based on a, a radius or a buffer area.
Okay, and the same goes, does that, does that, I mean, is that only for standalone car washes or does that include gas stations with car washes?
Yeah, for primary use and accessory.
So it's the same, three no matter what?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I'm gonna have a minute, there's three hundred and some pages of this zoning code. That was a great presentation. You threw a lot of information at us at one time. I know it took you guys nineteen months to do this. I think it's going to take us more than three meetings to go through this and, and kind of come to a consensus. That's, that's just me talking. But I do thank you. I'm sure I'll have plenty of other questions. Those were the ones that just, those are some of the recent zoning changes that we've made over the last couple of years. I just wanted to see how they were affected.
Any other questions? Mr. Feldman.
Just go back with councilman, councilwoman Coffee said, let me go back to sign standards and I didn't, I'd kind of followed this all along on the. As you presented each one, right? You wanted us to review it. I didn't see chapter ten sign standards. We're giving it back to the planning commission to approve a variance? What are we doing on that now?
Yeah, so we've had conversations with some council members who were just tired of seeing sign variances. They're so minimal that we. Thought planning commission can, can review them, make that decision. But again, there's that process where they could appeal that decision if it gets denied and they, the applicant can still come to council if it's denied.
And that's in the code?
Yes.
So go back to the sheet sign. We're going to allow them to make the decision before it comes to us?
They, under this code, they could approve the sign, yes. And, you know, they could deny it and then the applicant could appeal that denial.
And who'd they appeal to?
City council.
Okay, but somebody who's in a little bit of, I'm not going to say rush, but wants to get rolling. We've just extended more time for them, right?
How do you mean?
Well, they gotta wait for a planning commission meeting. And after a planning commission, they gotta wait for a city council meeting and then if they want, right? I mean, that's what we're saying, we're giving them more stuff to do.
I mean, with, with side variances specifically?
Yeah, we get side variances as council all the time and I get frustrated that we're getting them when it's not, you know what I mean? I mean, come on, who, you're gonna let them do it or you're gonna give it to us? What's, what's the code say now?
It would go to planning commission for approval. So it'd be less meetings for the applicant. But again, if it's denied, they could still appeal and city council could overturn that.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Trump.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? And just to note, this code rewrite would require three readings and a public hearing. Which if we, them all in order, I believe, would put us at a public hearing on December fourth. Do we have a motion to move this to council's agenda tonight for its first reading?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, abstentions that unanimously passes and will appear on tonight's agenda? Now we are in our public comment period. If anyone wishes to speak on an item related to planning, please raise your hand. I see Mr. Crawford, please state your name and address for the record and proceed.
Hi folks, it's Patrick Crawford, thirty-nine forty-four Red Wing Circle here in Stell. So good evening, members of the planning committee and rest of council and city administrators. I wanted to thank Mr. Cohen and his staff for selecting me to represent the Parks and Recreation Board on the Planning and Zoning Steering Committee. Admittedly, I have no formal education or training in planning and zoning, so. But I've, I've lived in this community for almost twenty years now and. I felt that, you know, the city's had some, I don't know, kind of spotty planning and zoning codes. It doesn't always flow necessarily the right way. We also kind of lack an identity, which was the reason that I applied to be on the committee. And it was a valuable experience for me. I learned a lot about zoning codes, design standards, signs, variances, things like that. So I'm here tonight to support, to express my support for the, for the code update. It's. I just wanted to say that the planning and zoning department in collaboration with House Hill Levine was always open to feedback from the committee. For example, there were thoughts that I had on garden fencing and street parking that ended up making it into the final version of this. I can think of other, another example where Mr. Merle, who's invested a lot in northwest part of town, had some suggestions on. Tree preservation, color temperature, things like that for parking lots that also made it into the final update and. I just wanted to say also that Mr. Cohen also, he, he also opened his office for one-on-one meetings with myself or any other committee member. To discuss any concerns or ideas that they had about the update and also they hosted several community sessions that. And use other forms of media to get feedback, like online surveys and things like that from the public. So there are multiple opportunities for the feed or for the community to weigh in on this. I have said to Mr. Cohen a number of times that nobody knows what, we don't, nobody has a crystal ball. We don't know what the community is going to look like in twenty, twenty-five years from now. We don't know what the trends and the needs of our citizens are going to be. For example, nobody knows if chicken coops or gardening or sourdough will still be popular in twenty years. But I do hope that this update will help shape our community well. I do support the update because I support the methodology that was used to, to make the update. And I just wanted to thank everyone that allowed me to be a small part in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Would anyone else like to address the planning committee? Seeing none, oh, sorry, sorry, right here. Yeah, just your name and address for the record first.
Microphone. Button, yeah, right in the middle.
Okay, I live in Cleveland, but it's sixteen fifty-three Coventry Road. My name is Cameron Hyatt. But I just saw with cannabis use facilities that like it included that the radius. Needs to be away from opioid facilities as well. Is, what is the reason for, it wasn't included in the other one that was in that same page? But just interested, what's like the thing with cannabis and opioids that made that a thing?
I believe that's a state law?
That is a, that is a state requirement.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on a planning topic? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain.
Sorry, if I can make one comment, I just forgot to clarify. In the ordinance, this code is set to be effective on February ninth. So if it is adopted December fourth, it'd be effective February ninth, which will give us time to update our records, our permits. Fee schedule, which we'll bring to council the next meeting, an applications manual. So just want to make that up, put it out there. Code will be effective February ninth as it is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McIntyre.
I just want to clarify to moving forward as we talk through this process and everything else. Any changes moving forward by the council, if there's an amendment to what's proposed to us, it would take a vote. to us, it would take a vote of five or more of the members of council, is that correct? Mr. Riley?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Thanks.
Baronak?
Here.
Feldman?
Here.
McIntyre?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Thank you, I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes from the October 9th meeting. Motion to approve. Second. Moved and seconded, approved, all in favor? Yes. Yes. Against, abstentions, that passes. Finance directors report, Mr. Toppin.
Thank you, Mr. Baronak, I do not have anything to report tonight, that won't be discussed, other items this evening, but I'd be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Any questions for the finance director? Seeing none, move on to our business consideration, fire department has the first two items.
Which one would you like to do first, the fire truck?
Yeah, that is A. B, the Falls Way.
Falls Way.
Sorry, I got multiple things here. The fire department is requesting to increase our appropriation with Falls Way from 85,000 to $117,000. This is necessary due to a significant problem that we had with the fire pump on one of our fire trucks. We are currently looking to have this repair reimbursed, but we're not sure where that will go because the truck was just shortly out of warranty when the problem occurred.
You have any questions? Mr. Feldman?
What was the problem?
The pump that pumps water to fire suffered a catastrophic failure of the internal pumping portion, and there was some debate with the repair facility as to whether it was a manufacturing defect, or some other problem, and we're trying to get to the bottom of that at this time, we haven't fully understood what's going on, but the most important thing was to get the truck repaired and back on the road while we figure the rest out.
These are expensive pieces of equipment, they should function correctly.
I agree totally with you.
So we're, we're, there's no, you guys have checks and double checks, there's no, this was a manufacturer issue?
So, we don't know for sure, I can't speak on, on behalf of that for sure, but what we know is, when the truck went out for its annual test to show that the pump will pump at their rated capacity, we discovered that it was not producing enough gallons per minute when it was pumping, and the only way to look into it further was to disassemble it, and when we disassembled it, they found some worn pieces that were significantly worn way beyond what you would ever imagine them to be, especially for not more than, much more than a year old. And we're trying to get to the bottom of what could cause that. There's been a few speculations made by the repair facility, but we're still further investigating it.
I appreciate that, and I'm not throwing this on, we have another fire truck approval coming up with a down payment, are we using the same manufacturer, what are we doing to make sure this doesn't happen again?
We are not using the same manufacturer.
That's all I need, thanks, Assistant Chief Line, thank you, Mr. Baronak.
Any other questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to move this on to council?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Yes. Against, abstentions, that is on to council agenda this evening. Move on to the overtime?
Okay, the fire department is asking for an additional $100,000 for overtime expenses. We expect this to get us to the end of the year without having to request further allocation.
Any questions? Mr. Feldman?
Thank you, Mr. Baronak, so we, just to approve two new firefighters, when are they on the road, when are they working?
So the new firefighters are on the road, they are working. I can tell you, we've seen about a 50% decrease in our shift staffing overtime requirements, so we've seen a huge reduction there. Unfortunately, one of our members has suffered, is off on long-term injury due to an accident, and we're also preparing to have to pay out up to $40,000 in comp time payout if it's cashed out at the end of the year, so we're preparing for that as well.
Well, we wish the best for the person that was injured, and we're glad, so the two that this council just hired are gonna help decrease this overtime number.
We're already seeing that, yes.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mr. Baronak.
Any other questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to move this on to council?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Yes. Against, abstentions, that gets moved on. I'm gonna take it a little bit out of order, we'll let fire department move on and discuss the fire, fire truck. Fire truck.
Last but not least here, the fire department is requesting that we are able to place a $300,000 down payment on a new fire engine tonight. This is, would allow us to engage in a contract with the manufacturer, we're looking at an approximate three-year time for it to be built, it will be delivered in 2028, and I believe we've made the pre-planning in the capital budget to allow for that at time of delivery, so there would be $300,000 placed down now with the balance due upon delivery.
Thank you, any questions? Mr. Feldman?
This is saving us money by doing it this way, correct?
Correct, so by placing $300,000 down, it will allow us to, they'll give you different options, the manufacturer will give different options, and the more you place down at the time of order, they offer you a discount. So in this case, by putting $300,000 down, they're offering a $24,000 discount.
So the answer is yes?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Mr. Baronak.
What's the max discount then?
The maximum discount is dependent, they gave us a 25%, 50, 75, and 100%. We did not explore the 100% because we had $300,000 to place, or allocated in this year to put down at this time, so that's the most we could, we could do at this time.
And then the 34 to six months, is that longer than the last build we had?
It's, it's about the same, it's come down maybe a couple months since then, we are using a different manufacturer, I have spoken with the salesman almost daily for the last several weeks, and he thinks that maybe it could be another month earlier than that, but they're working off of, they're working off a backlog of orders that were placed between 2020 and 2022, which has put them behind for years, trying to overcome that.
And how old's the vehicle, or how old's the one that this is replacing?
So in, in 2028, when it arrives, the vehicle it replaces will be 21 years old, and the current anticipated life cycle for frontline fire engine is 20 years, so it will be about one year past its expected useful life for frontline service, but I don't envision that being a huge problem because of our maintenance program here, we stay ahead of things, I don't foresee that being a problem for it to be a year older than we would hope.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Baronak.
Any other questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to move this on to council floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Yes. Against, abstentions, that gets moved on to council floor. Mr. Toppin?
Thank you, Mr. Baronak, 2025-205, this is our annual renewal for our general insurance coverage, which is currently split between Wicke and Love, and this is just our annual renew, renewal, which the current policy expires November 1.
Any questions? I have one question, what is the percent increase on, on your premiums for these?
It was only a 1% increase this year from last year.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion, motion to move this on to council floor?
So moved.
Move?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Yes.
Against, abstentions, that moves on council tonight. Now, this is a point in the meeting where we ask for public comment, if you have any comments relating to the finance committee, please come up to the mic, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, I just wanted to make one comment during this, during this session is, since there were so many things about the fire department, I've become a fire department statistic now, and the fire department did a wonderful job with, with their med unit when, when I needed them, they were there, they were very cordial, they were very professional, very thoughtful, so I just wanted to thank the fire department for that.
Thank you, we appreciate that feedback, we love to hear that.
Do I have a motion for adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, do adjourn, all in favor?
Yes.
Against, abstentions, that, we're done with the finance committee. I would like to call to order the committee to hold meeting of October 23rd, 2025 at 6:55 PM, will the clerk please call the roll?
Rio?
President.
Dioka?
Here.
Feldman?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Coffey?
Here.
Baronak? McIntyre?
Here.
Next item, approval of the minutes, do we have approval of the minutes from the October 9th committee or the whole meeting?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
opposed, those minutes are approved. Law directors report, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President, just a couple of quick things. One, I wanna thank all the attendees to the September probate 101 presentation that the Summit County Probate Court, specifically Chief Magistrate Steve Elliott, put on over at the senior center. It was so well attended that we are looking at doing a second one of those in January or February, but this one's gonna focus specifically on trusts, because there were a lot of questions about trusts, whereas this last session was only about probate 101, the basics of probate, so just be on the lookout, if anyone is interested in trusts or exploring that, and the benefits of that, be on the lookout for January or February bringing back the, that presentation. Speaking of presentations, my next scamming presentation at the senior center will be December 18th at 1:30, and then that day is also going to be a day of scamming because in conjunction with the mayor's office, we are putting on an expanded scamming presentation here in city hall that evening at 6:00 PM, because of some information that we've received from the FBI, and it's going to be an elaboration of not just scams targeted at seniors, but towards the entire population, as well as some avenues of exploitation that have been becoming very topical, so be on the lookout. A card is going to go out to residents about that presentation as well from the mayor's office, and he might elaborate a little bit during his report about that, but just wanted to mention that. And then finally, just because it's topical, and we were talking about cannabis earlier tonight, the House passed Senate Bill 56, we've talked about this before, the major overhaul to that, and it, it has to go back to the senate for reconciliation, and then finally to the governor for approval, but the big change to that, that council should be aware of, it will regulate hemp-derived products as well, so the Delta Eights and the Delta Tens you're hearing about, things you're seeing that are being sold in vape shops or at gas stations that are hemp-derived, those will be regulated, and they will have to be sold at dispensary stations, no longer at vape shops or gas stations or things of that nature. That's a big change to this bill, and that's one of the big things that has to be reconciled with the senate, because that was not included in the Senate Bill 56 originally. There's a number of other changes, nothing really big or of note that changes the zoning code or the regulations that we've talked about tonight, but there's some other changes to the taxation code, that sort of thing. So I will give council a full update once we hear back from the senate what they do with it, and whether the governor, governor signs it, but I know that we've talked about it before, I know council's very interested in it, so I just wanted to make sure, that passed yesterday afternoon out of house, so that's very, very topical, and I could send the bill analysis over to council after the meeting, just if you are curious at seeing some of the other ones, but I just wanted you guys to be aware of the big change that's, that's coming out, and I know that's, vape shops have been a concern in buying Delta Eight and Delta Ten, so happy to answer any other questions, though, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley, questions for Mr. Riley? We appreciate that timely clarification. Consideration of business items, first item is Summit County Health Department.
First item is Summit County Health Department. Dr. DePompey, and I think we have. That would be great. Thank you.
Now it's on. Okay. I am your representative to the board of the Public Health Department in Summit County. And about a year ago, our Commissioner Donna Scotto retired. And in her place, I have asked Commissioner Chris Barker to come and speak with you this evening so that you might get to know him a little bit better. Hopefully, we don't have any major issues that Stowe gets all involved with the Commissioner. But I would like you to get to know him a little bit. So Commissioner Chris Barker.
Good evening. My name is Chris Barker, Health Commissioner of Summit County Public Health. Before I assumed this position, I was in the preparedness field for sixteen years, serving as the Director of Emergency Preparedness and the Northeast Central Ohio Regional Public Health Coordinator. I'm going to provide a little bit of summary about what public health does primarily on the preparedness field. So we receive funding through the Center for Disease Control and Prevention for preparedness through the FEP grant. It's Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant. It's a cooperative agreement that right now our program is a hundred percent funded. That could change in the future, so we're monitoring current legislative discussions. The main goal of preparedness is to improve preparedness in local communities, primarily through operational planning and development. So working on plans for the roles and responsibilities of public health, plan integration with our local municipalities and stakeholders, training and exercise, and continuity planning for our healthcare industry. In the regional capacity, we do receive funding for regional coordination. Basically, in that role, we provide technical assistance and support to thirteen counties within the state of Ohio, serving sub homeland security region five. To get a good understanding of what public health does, I want to kind of cover some of the roles and responsibilities, and I'll try to do this briefly. The first role is communicable disease surveillance investigation and response to communicable disease hazards. Communicable disease surveillance includes understanding, basically situational awareness of what's going on in our community. We monitor emergency department visits, over-the-counter drug sales, absenteeism, and we receive reports for communicable disease from our hospital stakeholders to really have a good understanding of what's occurring in our community, where we may have to act and respond to mitigate the public health threat to our community. Communicable disease investigations is a primary responsibility of public health. This includes conducting investigations to understand where the disease occurred, identify the risk to the public, and implement any mitigation measures that we may have to implement. We also conduct transmission limitation strategies or medical countermeasures intervention in response to a communicable disease or a biological, chemical, or radiological hazard. Transmission limitation strategies includes isolation, quarantine, or community mitigation strategies. On the medical countermeasure side, that includes vaccine distribution or medication distribution. The COVID nineteen is an excellent example of a major vaccine initiative. Right now, our capability of our jurisdiction, we can provide vaccine in one shift for about three thousand individuals. From a medication perspective, we could probably serve six thousand individuals in one shift. If we operate on a head-of-household model for certain types of hazards, we could probably serve forty to sixty thousand individuals in one shift with an estimate of about six to seven individuals picking up or six to seven people. We also provide medical material management and medical surge support. So this pertains to healthcare continuity. So we monitor supply chain integrity to understand any implications to the health field. We look at surge conditions in our hospital settings to make sure that we can either implement diversion plans, either on a local or regional level, to make sure that hospitals don't get inundated, emergency departments, urgent cares. And we also really prioritize allocations of critical resources. During COVID, PPE was in the news pretty significantly with resource shortages. So we looked at allocation and prioritization of distribution of those products. Mass care is another major responsibility of public health. Majority of the roles and responsibilities do fall in a municipal government, though. But we do provide support and assistance. This includes food, water, and commodity distribution, sheltering, as well as support and assistance on evacuation or reentry into a community. These are very large and complex hazards that a community may face, and public health can provide some assistance associated with that to support near response. Fatality management is another role and responsibility of public health. Our main responsibility falls under non-acute hazards, notably a communicable infectious disease, a chemical, biological, or radiological hazard. This pertains to decedent management. It could include close coordination with our medical examiner on the processing of decedents. We provide vital statistics for the county, so death certificates, burial permits. And it may also include temporary storage or burial of decedents. Environmental health is one of the most notable services that we provide. This includes food safety, water safety, and air quality. For those services, food safety, we inspect shelters if they're in long operations or any businesses, retail food establishments, or food service operators that are impacted by hazard. We mostly respond to fires that occur outside of our traditional inspections. But for a large-scale situation, that may escalate. For water quality, we regulate septic and wells. But we do provide general assistance with our stakeholders at EPA for any municipal impact. But it's mostly an EPA responsibility. For air quality, we do provide air quality monitoring assistance for Summit County Portage and Medina. We also respond to various hazardous material incidents. In the last several years, I think I've responded to about three specific hazardous material situations that happen. We provide technical assistance relevant to public health and the air quality. We also provide assistance relevant to general habitability. We have situations where there's mass debris, reentry concerns coming into an impacted area. We'll support your municipality in general habitability when individuals are returning to their home. That was a very quick brief. I tried to summarize a little bit more of my notes just to save time.
No, you did great. You talked fast, Steve. We appreciate that. Let me see if, any questions from anyone?
I do have handouts. I'll leave them in the back.
Yeah, leave those here. Just one quick comment or question for me. I was talking to a resident, a Stowe resident, who's a recent Kent State graduate in public health, and she was frustrated. Is the public health industry? She was frustrated. She was in the job search. And I was speaking with her, and she was frustrated that, I think there was only twelve that graduated at Kent State this past year in public health. Can you tell me about the field?
Right after COVID, we did have a pretty significant turnaround in staffing. Right now, that has leveled off, though. So most of the departments around Northeast Ohio have filled any vacancies that we may have. It does happen sporadically, but there's a lot of concern associated now with funding for public health. So that may have slowed some organizations opening positions.
Yeah, I heard her say that, right? So, well, I appreciate it. Congratulations on your appointment. Any questions for Mr. Parker? Thank you, sir. We'll take the handouts and we'll get them to everybody. Somebody want to?
All right.
Yeah. Yeah, you can give them.
All right.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is the, Mrs. Sinatra, annual report on staffing?
Yes. So this is in accordance with ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one fifteen. I am presenting, and I sent to all of you yesterday via email, the city's annual report on staffing. It's a snapshot of our current workforce, anticipated staffing for the upcoming year, and information on merit increases for the non-bargaining unit employees. So in twenty twenty-five, we processed thirty-eight new hires, with thirty-five of those being replacements for existing positions. There are only three new positions added. The departments with the highest number included police, fire, the judge's office, and some in engineering. We also brought in some seasonal employees in parks and rec programs, parks maintenance, street maintenance, and Fox Den. As of this reporting period, the city of Stowe employs two hundred and thirty-five full-time employees across all departments. The staffing levels have remained pretty steady. Hiring throughout the year focused mainly on maintaining services and replacement and backfill positions, as I mentioned. Looking into twenty twenty-six, the anticipated staffing changes are minimal. We have positions budgeted in the following areas. There's an amphitheater programmer position that we have proposed. There's building and parks maintenance roles, an engineering inspector, one additional police officer, three school resource officers, and part-time parks and rec position. And again, these are all budgeted or part of the budget for twenty twenty-six. For our non-bargaining employees who receive merit increases, the average merit increases awarded this year in twenty twenty-five was five point one nine percent. Forty-two employees received the merit adjustments. The increases distributed fairly among below-average, average, and above-average categories. And those are all reflected in the spreadsheet I presented. Happy to answer any questions.
So I'll start, Mrs. Sinatra. I don't see a public information officer on there, so I'll have to go out on my own and talk to Mrs. Revay, right? See if we can, correct? I don't see that in there, right? Okay, I get it.
That is correct.
Yeah, I'm going to work on that. Other questions for Mrs. Sinatra? Yes, Mr. McIntyre?
Just want to, I guess, can you elaborate? I see the amphitheater programmer included in the budget as a part of a new department. What is the new department that's being created?
Yeah, I will defer to Nick on this one.
So in anticipation of someday getting the public information officer, we wanted to put together a department of, we call it the Department of Community Relations. And obviously, this all has to come to council to approve first. But right now, we anticipate just housing those two positions in that department once, if they are filled. So that's the, it's a very minor department. It would report to the service department, and that's the only small change.
And when do you anticipate legislation coming before council for the creation of this new department?
Well, we would wait and see what happens with the budget. And then after that, we would present the new department to council before we would advertise for the amphitheater programmer.
And as far as the amphitheater programmer, that's not a question really for here. If you could, if you, I guess, has a job description and what is everything you're looking for and created for this position when the time comes that you're going to go out for it?
Yeah.
Can you forward it to council just so we can, just so we can see, I guess, what all the expectations of this new, this new role that you'd be asking to hire would be responsible for?
Yep.
And the anticipated pay grades and everything like that? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Feldman.
Sure. Other questions or comments for Mrs. Sinatra? We appreciate it. So, Mrs. Sinatra, I'm going to make sure I'm just reading your document right. I'm on your attachment. We've got fifty-eight policemen, or no, wait. Fifty-eight firemen, right? And sixty-one police. Does that look right?
Yeah, so those positions, this is out of our payroll system. So you are looking at fire total fifty-eight.
And police total sixty-one.
Yeah, and that includes, you know, all positions. Some part, there's a part.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. Yeah, that's not just patrol officers. What do we have budgeted? I'm not looking at your document for next year on increases for those because we just got two new firemen. Do we have any police?
One.
One? Okay. So that puts them at fifty-nine, right? Total, I'm talking department-wide.
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Other questions? Mr. Riley?
I assume it's like records and that as well. Those all aren't cops. Those are just like records.
Right, yeah. They're all non-bargaining positions. Yep, yep.
He is, Chief Feldman had his hands up, sorry.
Go ahead, Chief Feldman.
No, I was just going to say that we have currently authorized by council forty-five officers, and we're asking for that one additional officer for the twelve-hour shifts for next year, which we'll talk about in the operating budget. But yes, that's all our employees, civilians included.
Yep, understood. And Mrs. Revay and I have had some conversations about operating dollars already. So, yep, any other questions? Yes, Mrs. Coffee?
Just a comment. This is, I just think it's a lot of full-time positions to add, so I did ask the administration to prioritize these. So I have that list if anyone wants to share it.
Yeah, well, I think I can follow up with that. Public information officers are three closest population cities in Ohio, Westlake, Maslin, and Lima. They all have one. So. But that's another story. So we'll get there as we get going. Yes, any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Next, operation budget on the agenda. Thank you, Mrs. Sinatra, for your presentation. Appreciate it.
So Kelly and I did not, we were sending information out for you to have. We didn't necessarily intend to present, but we certainly can. We can go through the PowerPoint quickly. I can hook in, or we can pull it up. And then we can also pull up the budget book if you have specific questions for the various portions of that. Let us know.
Council, you can kind of give me some verbal, non-verbal. What would you guys like?
PowerPoint kind of highlights where we've been, where we're at, where we need to be.
Yeah, let's make it a little topical. I don't want to go like we did earlier. So let's just kind of make it topical. And maybe council or elected officials, if we have some questions, we'll throw them back. We anticipate this being a three-reading ordinance, so. Go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't know, Lisa, are you able to pull it up, or do you need me to hook in? Or Sonia? Yeah?
No, we can't.
Okay. The dongle went, sorry.
While she's getting that set up, Mr. Feldman, I would like to thank Mrs. Revay and Sammy Wagner and Katie Luke and those in my department. They've been living and breathing this operational budget. They've put in a lot of work for this. And I just want to, you know, give them the credit that's due to them for their hard work in getting this put together and getting all the numbers to match up.
Mrs. Revay, thank you. Sammy and, Mr. Toppin, thank you too. Do we have it? Are we ready to go?
Give me one second. It's going, it's going. It's moving.
Okay, so we'll quickly go through. You saw this kind of presentation last year. And this, again, basically, this doesn't really have numbers in it. This is just giving a little overview and for any residents watching on kind of what we do when we're doing the budget process. So we are cash basis accounting. We recognize revenues and expenses at the time it's received and paid out. And we've been doing the last couple of years, from what I'm seeing in your system, zero-based budgeting. And that is actually what ends up leaving the carryover. So we are not trying to overspend on anything we aren't planning to receive in. So that is why you'll see the budget expense side equal the revenue side. Biggest components of the operating budget is personnel. So wages, salaries, benefits, insurance, that's always your largest portion. Day-to-day costs of running the city. So that would be like all of our software, any programs we need to use, any contract labor we're going to have. And then we've got some smaller capital items in there as well. So if we needed a new conference table somewhere, things like that are built in. Repairs to vehicles, fuel, that's all built into the operating budget in the general fund side of things. And I know a question came up from a council member about why the operating budget is so much more than a capital budget. And that's basically because of all of these components, but also the grand total of the operating budget you see does include our enterprise funds, which would be Fox Den Golf Course, the water utility fund, and then also the courts. Because those are basically businesses within our business, and they are supposed to be self-sustaining. So we bring the appropriation ordinance to you, and that's what you received a couple of weeks ago, and then the budget book last week. So basically, right now, local taxes in terms of revenues for our budget, we anticipate thirty-one million four sixty. Miscellaneous receipts, a little over two million. Intergovernmental grants and aids, just over one million. And charges for city services, four hundred and ninety-five thousand. Fines for fishers, license permits, three million. State shared taxes, one point one million. Transfers, seven hundred and fifty thousand. And reimbursements and refunds, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Sammy worked on our revenue side of the budget, so I do want to thank her. And we also, she's got the same mindset I do going into things in that as to budget conservatively. So looking over the past several years, especially when it's coming to all of our intergovernmental aid, because we don't know what could happen with that in the future. Hopefully, nothing in twenty twenty-six. This is just a little bit of income tax revenue background over the years, and you have been holding steady. So when you look at twenty-five, it's looking low, but that's obviously because our year's not over yet. So when the PowerPoint was done, we're pulling figures basically through September. And so we are on target to meet and possibly exceed expected revenues on the income tax side of things. So that is always wonderful to see. You've got a great mix of individual income tax and business here. So again, we talked about what kind of goes into the main part, so we'll skip that. Water fund update, important to know. The strains in the water system were highlighted in twenty-four. And again, this year, Raftellis, which was an independent firm, was used to assess the current rate structure, used to fund the various water system projects. Results of the study were. Results of the study were, were displayed for council to see and reviewed, and a new rate structure was proposed. And that's to help the water fund achieve self-sustaining status and keep us in EPA compliance. Legislation was presented September eleventh to council for that, and that would take effect January of 2026 if it is passed in this year. Again, we went over the positions that were budgeted. Positions were discussed. We met with every department as we did this budget. Kelly and Sammy and I sat down with each department. So, they also gave input to us. We forwarded that information to Nick and the mayor, and they made the final decision on how to prioritize and what to cut out, if anything. That would bring our number of full-time employees as of the end of October this year, two hundred and forty-two. All right, so the reasons to keep our reserve balance. We need to supply sufficient cash flow for daily financial needs, obviously. Offsetting significant economic downturns, which could very well happen, as we can see with our government. Fingers crossed that does not happen, which would also then lead to some revenue shortfalls potentially, when we talk about intergovernmental revenues, and property tax revenue coming in to fund our services for police, fire, and EMS. And so, hopefully, those disruptions do not happen. We wanna be able to provide funds for unforeseen expenditures resulting from emergencies. For example, last year in your safety building, you had a chiller go out. And that's not something that was budgeted for ahead of time in the Capitol. We did not anticipate that. So, again, having a reserve helps with those things. We wanna maintain our excellent double-A-two bond rating with Moody's. That's the rating that we receive to be able to go out and have bonds. It's like a credit rating, and there's different ratings between Moody's, the S and P, and there's gonna be one more I'm gonna forget. When we talk about the reserve here, I know it's come up, you know, that in the past, it seems like we're carrying a lot of money. Honestly, we are not. I'm delighted to see that any city can actually keep a reserve. The GFOA suggests that the bare minimum you keep would be two months' worth of operating expenses, but it is highly recommended to go between five and fifteen percent. So, for this next year, at just over eight million, with a operating budget of over ninety-three million, we are just above nine percent for that carryover. And I can tell you right out of the gates, we're gonna be lending ourselves money, so to speak. The amphitheater needs to be built. It's in the Capitol budget, but all of the cell phone tower money is not coming to us all at once to cover that. So, basically, we will be in and out of our reserve as we pay bills, and then as money comes back in to replenish it. So, it's a pretty, pretty big reason to, you know, kinda keep the reserve there. And again, if we have anything else unforeseen. Here's what the reserve balance kinda looks like and how it's grown over the years. So, we're not, we're not way out there. Twenty-twenty-five, you were estimated to have just under twelve million. And again, like I said, for next year, it's actually gonna probably go a little closer to between eight and nine. And that number can fluctuate, depending on, you know, projects that do or don't get done, a money that is or is not spent within the budgets. So, it's an estimate. I went over the guidelines kinda with you about having adequacy of unrestricted fund balance, so that we can take into account every circumstance. We are at the time of year now where sometimes things need to go over budget, for like Falls Way, as an example. That's another unforeseen circumstance, and sometimes we do have to make approvals on things that are gonna take us outside of the range of what we budgeted. And you'll see those amendments to the funds come to you in December for approval for anything we had to amend for the budget for this current year. Your debt trend, the city of Stowe carries long-term debt in the form of bonds on some of your projects. And then we carry a short-term note that was used to, I believe, purchase your courthouse, and then also do some of the funding over on the range at, the driving range at the golf course. And short-term debt is, is very useful to have, because you, you set a pay-down structure, but also, when projects come up, again, that maybe you did not originally plan on funding, you can potentially keep that going or add to it if needed. So, we have been paying down that, that debt on a schedule. This year, we're scheduled to pay it down four hundred thousand. And there's no plan to accelerate that at this moment in time. There was eight hundred thousand left, I believe, on the driving range. So, that, so that should be paid down. And then, again, you, we've got, I think, your courthouse and the golf course itself, I wanna say twenty thirty-four. So, there is a debt schedule. If some of you haven't asked for it or haven't seen it, go ahead and ask, and we'll send it out to you. And that gives the approximation of when things are gonna be paid down for the bonds and the short-term debt. All right, so we don't have any new short-term debt planned, or any new long-term debt planned, so that's a plus. So, any questions so far to that? And would you like me to pull up the budget book that was sent to you? For those that don't know, our budget book comes out of our fancy budget system, and basically gives some actual spreadsheets, if you will, and some graphs and, to kinda break down within each department what's happening and the totals.
I'll open it up to council members. I just have, I, I've got one. So, um, so, our reserve, carryover, whatever you wanna call it, is healthy, and it should be healthy. Correct?
Correct.
Our debt is down, and it's good to have some debt.
It absolutely is. I know in your house, you kinda feel like, oh, I don't wanna get myself out of debt as quickly as I can. But even at your house and in government finance, in order to keep a good credit rating for when you do need to go out for more debt, whether it's short-term or bonds, it's important to maintain, you know, to maintain that rating. And if you constantly pay everything down, or you have no debt, sometimes it's hard to get in and get a rating. So, so we have a nice, healthy balance of reserve and the amount of debt we're carrying, and our ability to pay it down, you know, at any point in time throughout a given year. If we do see that we're in, ending the year in a fantastic financial position, we can always make that decision to discuss paying down, you know, more than, more than we had planned.
Right, last question for me, and I'll open it up. House Bill three thirty-five, huge concern. Eliminate inside millage, what's that gonna do, and where does that affect in our budget?
So, right now, the property tax elimination issue is, it would, like I said before, it would absolutely affect the schools. It's gonna affect EMS, fire, and police. We, we get our, some funding from the state for their pensions. We are required by the state to pay those pensions at the rates that are set. So, whether or not that money is coming in, we have to find a way to pay that. In the city of Stowe in particular, the way that's gonna probably happen is we would drastically have to increase the income taxes. Sales tax will increase at the state level, I'm sure. And so, that's what that would look like if all of that got stripped away. Right now, it's, it's, you know, it sounds really good in theory to eliminate property taxes, but it, it's gonna be a big haul to come up with an alternative plan. And it's only a two-year window, because we do get billed in arrears, so that if that was to take effect, you know, they've gotta have a plan in place, so that when that two years is up and we're all done collecting property tax revenues, what's next? So, really, the closest things to be keeping an eye on now are House Bill one twenty-nine. That moved over to the Senate Committee for Local Government, and so did House Bill, I think it's three hundred or three oh three. It's gonna be House Bill three hundred. And basically, one twenty-nine is going to allow the, I'm sorry, that one's kinda like allowing for the emergency and substitute levies for schools, but what it's also trying to do is basically cut in a little bit to the schools, so that if those spikes in our property values happen, as they have, at least in my counting, the past several years, it's not so much that like a big portion of it's going to the schools again. And so, that's, that's kinda meant for that. Three hundred is where we're gonna allow the county budget commission to come in and modify or reduce millage, if they see that the millage is causing a local government to get excess or unnecessary funding beyond what they think we would need. Also, still detrimental to the schools in there, though. So, both of those pieces, opposed by the OSBA, not good for public schools, not, not great for government, but that's everyone's answer right now to a short-term solution to try to make property owners feel like they're working on something, so that they don't get hit constantly with this.
However, we're unclear on the replacement.
We are, we are. I think that it will, I will keep following all the bills, but, 'cause that's what I do anyway, but I think that it's gonna be a minute, because, again, there's even people out there who are proponents of getting rid of the property tax, but they agree that it's not something we can just, you know, pull the trigger on and do. We've gotta come up with some, some solid plans.
Thank you. Can we make sure, and I'm done, can we, Mr. Toppin or Mrs. Revay or somebody drew, keep council updated on these? I mean, we can, you know what I mean? So, we kinda know where we're at. I, I would appreciate, I don't know if other council members would certainly appreciate it.
Absolutely. Did you, did you wanna pull up the budget book?
Other questions? Yes, Mr. McIntyre?
And we never hear that we have to make cuts, right? So, let's not, the first thing that you come to me with is a, is a tax increase, I'll be a solid no, you know? There's gotta be a healthy balance of cuts. And, you know, if there's, if there's a necessary increase, I understand. I, I appreciate you following these bills, and I understand too, like if you just cut that funding off, you know, city of Stowe's no stranger to being cut off of funding in the past, right? So, it's, you know, being prepared for that is what we need to do, and I think you're doing a good job just by tracking these bills and communicating our debt and our, you know, where we stand financially, so we can make those sound decisions as a council. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you. I feel like it's almost six of one and a half dozen of the other, because your property taxes will go away, but you will feel the hit. Everyone, every resident in Ohio will feel the hit between sales tax and income tax some way. And the townships are gonna suffer greatly, because they don't charge an income tax, right? So, they don't have withholding tax or any kind of income tax, right? So, it's, it, there needs to be a lot more thought given to all of it, but we'll definitely keep you guys up to date as things move through the House and the Senate. Sometimes when things get to committee, they kinda sit there for a little while and ruminate, or people wanna add extra stuff to the bill, so, so, yeah. So, I, I'm, I'm gonna guess that before the end of this year, we don't have any information on that.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Seeing none. We'll move along to item D, motions for the Arts Commission. Mr. Prabodanik, you wanna give us a brief, quick, quick, and then we'll go to the motion? How do you wanna do it? You just want me to move along?
Why don't you just call them down, and then if anybody has any questions, we can go from that point. You should have received the information for each one of these individuals. Some of them are filling vacancies, others, well, most of them are filling vacancies for either almost a whole term or through 2027, and so forth like that, so. Lot of that has been from people maybe moving, getting another job, not being able to fill obligations and so forth. So, we wanna get those committees, which are very important to us, our boards and commissions, back up to SNF, so we can keep moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Prabodanik. Item D, do I have a motion to fulfill? Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. McIntyre, I missed you.
Thank you. I just have one question, I guess, for all these, really, it could be answered. I guess, you know, these, I see a lot of resignations. I get people move, things change in their lives or anything else, but how long have these resignation, what's the latest, or how, what's the longest resignation? How long have these been out there vacant?
Not very long. Like I said, we had to track some people down, because people maybe weren't showing up at meetings, and then not responding. So, we leave it open, kinda as a general practice, if you miss three meetings, then we'll reach out to you and say, do you think you can serve? If they say yes, then we move forward, but say it's important to have their attendance there. But, many of the people said, yeah, I really tried to make it work, and it's not working for me. So, that was, that was how this all kinda came about, so.
Okay, I know, and I know in previous years, like the Arts Commission, I know at one point, it was like council.
Yeah.
Appointing, and I think it was 2020 or 2021, we did away with council appointments and just left that, you know, to the mayor.
Right.
And I know one of the first things that, when you took office, Mayor Prabodanik, you know, we increased the, some of these commissions in terms of their size.
Yeah.
And that's why I asked the question, 'cause I keep seeing these vacancies and everything else, and I, do we need to consider maybe in the future if these resignations continue to maybe reduce the size, so we can have a more, a quorum ever an issue?
I, I don't think that that's really necessary, because as soon as we put these out for advertisement's sake, if we don't have people, they're automatically, there's people out there that are interested. So, it's not like we're trying to pull teeth and say, hey, you want to? The biggest lag, like I said, is people kinda deciding, this isn't going to work for me at this time, whether it's job, whether it's moving, whatever the case is, it's not gonna work. So, that's what we're running into right now.
Okay, and certainly, obviously, you keep applications on files.
Yeah.
'Cause I see some of these applications aren't recent.
Right.
So, you know, so you're pulling from those to see if they still have an interest in.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none. Item D, do I have a motion to approve Lindsay King for the immediate term on the Arts Commission?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That motion is approved. Item E, do I have a motion to approve Tasha Bellini for the immediate opening on the Arts Commission?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve Chuck Obendorf on the Civil Service Commission for the term of January second, 2026, to January second, 2031?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
That motion carries.
I just wanna be clear, I'm a no, because in 2020, Mr. Obendorf was part of the Charter Review Commission that voted to waste taxpayer dollars and sue the city council over charter amendments. So, I just wanna clarify why I'm voting no, so, thank you.
Thank you. Item G, do I have a motion to approve Jocelyn Schardiger on the Commission on Inclusion for the immediate opening?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item H, do I have a motion to approve Kelly Clark for the immediate opening on the Commission on Inclusion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. One point of discussion, she, I, I noticed on her documentation, Mr. Mayor, that she has, she's a parent of an autistic daughter, so. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That motion carries. We have a motion to approve Michael Stanley on the immediate opening on the Commission on Inclusion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That motion carries. We have a motion to approve Bob Ponius on the Parks and Recreation Board for the term beginning January second, 2026, to January second, 2030.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That motion carries. We have a motion to approve Michael Garrity on the immediate opening in the Urban Forestry Commission.
Move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That motion carries. I would like to make a motion that we recess to executive session for the appointment or compensation of the public employee, one-two-one-point-two-two-G-one?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reel?
Yes.
Dioka?
Yes.
Valman?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Coffey?
Yes.
Farinak?
Yeah.
McIntyre?
We are now in executive session. We are now in executive session.[461.21]
We are back from executive session where we discussed the appointment or compensation of a public employee, 121.22G1. We have one item that came out of executive session. I'd like to introduce ordinance 2025-210, excuse me, 210, thank you, and ask the clerk to please read it by its title.
Ordinance 2025-210, and ordinance confirming the mayor's appointment of Heather Prusha as chief of police of the police department of the city of Stowe, establishing compensation for said appointee and declaring emergency.
We have a motion to move this on to tonight's council agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
opposed, that will appear on tonight's council agenda. Now comes the time in the meeting where we ask for comments from the audience. Should you wish to make any comments, please raise your hand to be recognized by the president of council. Please provide your name and address for the benefit of our clerk, because your comments will become part of the permanent record, permanent record. You'll be allowed three minutes, anyone. Yeah.
Gosh, this is great to be in front of all you illustrious people here. My name is Larry Bremelow, I live in Lermitage Place. Mayor knows he checks my house out every time he goes by, make sure I'm there. I'm here for a main reason basically is to tell you two or three things and ask two or three things. Tell you a little bit about myself, I deal with a lot of seniors, I am a senior, I think. Most of you all are not seniors, but I'm going to tell you right now, the first thing, when my wife and I moved into Stowe, this is our 20th year, we're celebrating, I had a mentor, some of you remember Bill Monbeck, my realtor, and he told me, he said, you know, you're moving into a city that is a sleeping giant. I said, oh, okay, that is a small town, so, but, he said, no, he said, it's really a sleeping giant, and he said, you're going to love it here. Well, I got to tell you, in 20 years, I, I hope, the only way they care is to carry me out here, because this is a great community. And I talk to a lot of seniors when I get around the area, because that's what I do, my daughter and I, and I hear comments, you're from Stowe. Oh, man, that is a great community, they don't even live here, and they're talking about how great this is. The services that we have, the public security, the fire police, the services that we have here. I think we failed to really stop and realize what we really have in this town, and I call it a town, it's a small town. But I'm here to ask you a couple of things, because I only have three minutes. Number one is, you have one of the greatest facilities, I think, and it's only a couple of years old, and that's the senior center. I, this, what, what we do for our seniors here is unbelievable. The activities, the facility out there, I looked at that when they got that, I told Mayor Kerbonik, I said, hey, that's one of the greatest investments you ever made. Now, why did I say that? Well, you all know we're becoming an aging country, you know, we have 10,000 to 12,000 people a day turn 65 in this country, okay? Let's bring it down to the lower level. We have 34,000 plus change people in the community. How many people would you believe of those 34,000 or 60 and above? Would you believe plus two, maybe 9,000? One out of four in this town, or 60 and above? We didn't get down to 55, because that's what it says, senior adults. Oh, by the way, you're, you're a senior at 50, here, Pete tells you that, you can go get a discount. But what I'm asking for you is, we do have a tremendous asset in this country, and I consider that our senior population. People are living longer, and maybe because they're not living as well, with quality, but by the same token, people here, we're, they're becoming an asset of this community. Why, why are so many seniors here? Because they love it. They love this community. So I'm telling you right now, be proud of what you've done, because the senior population is very vocal about things, as you well know, probably. But getting to the real reason I'm here is, they're lacking the communication. They're lacking some resources. And I think they're also lacking possibility, their utilization of their talents. We're, we're kind of shoving them aside, saying they're retiring, and there's a lot of them that will do that, but there's some that are going to say, okay, boy, I wish somebody, I wish I had something to do. I guarantee you, they're not coming to make their job, make their work, but there's a lot of talent out there that we could utilize. And maybe that could make up for some gaps that we do have in our employment, or our areas, our volunteerism, but we can't get to them. Some of the comments I get from these seniors is, when was the sunset blast last weekend? Well, I didn't know that. Well, everybody says, well, don't you want a website? Seniors, you'll see someday, you'll get tired of being on a website. Seniors today are not, that's not their priority. A lot of them are, a lot of them run phones, but what I'm saying, and I'm asking for consideration for the senior population of this town, to improve the resources and the communication of this asset that we have. And I think you'll see even more activity, because they love Stowe. They love being here, and they love what you're offering for. That's why this, this community, I've been told, and I think it's pretty accurate, Stowe and Madera Falls are one and two, in number of seniors, pro rata population in some counties. You ask yourself, why? Because they love it. And I think we can take advantage of that. The other part of it is, I'd love to see a little bit more consideration in the senior center for topical type information. Activities, oh my lord, they're all, they, they said, this is beautiful, this is courageous, but they also need to know, how do I get rid of my stuff? I need some advice on downsizing, or, gosh, I need some help with some elder care estate planning. We need some topical information, and we can even boost the participation of our seniors. Another one, we used to have the old senior expo. The last one we had was up at life center plus. And like our two-year expo that we have at the school, I think we could do it again, on offsetting years or every year. Seniors want to see what's going on, so why not have that expo? Why not have some topical information? There is a lot of, we had a senior elder care group in this town before the COPE, we had to break it up. So I'm kind of asking for your help, consideration, let's enhance our asset that we have, and that's our senior community, because you're going to be a senior someday. Maybe a couple of you. But anyway, that's.
Thank you, Larry. We appreciate your involvement with the senior community, we appreciate your patience waiting for us to get through.
I love hearing, and.
Thank you.
Look what he's doing in scamming.
Yeah.
Because I hear that a lot from seniors.
Yeah.
Keep it up, because that, I hear everything from them.
Yep. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Bremelow, appreciate that.
Mr. Feldman, if I could.
Yes.
Mr. Bremelow, in February, we're trying something new, actually, we're going to have a volunteer slash job fair for seniors. There will be some possible, from even the outside, possible part-time paying jobs or volunteering opportunities and so forth like that. Kathy Lewis currently is working on the calendar for next year, and Drew knows, to incorporate more of those informational type things. We're hoping, well, I know, and we talk about this constantly as far as communication, every city right now, of course, is struggling. We lost the local paper, we lost all that kind of stuff. What we're hoping to produce with this. What we're hoping to produce with this new electronic sign out here is at least stimulate of, okay, the summer sunset blast is this weekend. For details, go visit the website. It, it's very different nowadays as far as if we want to go ahead and put information out, it's, it, it, there's really not a reporter anymore, or our own reporter. So again, of getting that information out, they say, okay, if you write the story and you provide the pictures, we'll print it for you. And they do. But like I said, it's one of those type things. So yes, it isn't falling on deaf ears, but I want to let you know, you're going to see some differences. It, it was a growing thing, to give you an idea, back in January 12th of this year is when we opened up the Senior Center, we had about 150, if you want to call it membership. We just try to keep track of people. We're well over 800 now, so we're starting to tailor our programs with that. And Mr. Riley has been a big part of this also too, as we look forward to educating our seniors. Again, people are more mobile, more youth-like, athletic, and like I said, so you'll see some changes. And I know you and I have met, oh gosh, probably four or five years ago, but still even when we had the coffee place over here, so. Yeah, so we'll stay tuned and I'll stay in touch with you too. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting of October 23rd, 2025 at 8:21 PM. I apologize for that. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Rio?
Present.
Fioka?
Here.
Feldman?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Coffee?
Here.
Baranek?
Here.
McIntyre?
Here.
Before moving on to the prayer and pledge of allegiance, I wanted to read a brief statement and have the clerk enter it into the, the minutes. So as we hold our final Stowe City Council regular meeting before the general election, I wanted to express my sincere gratitude to each member of this council. It's been my honor to serve alongside each one of you, and I truly appreciate the teamwork and dedication we have shown to residents and taxpayers in making positive progress for the City of Stowe. Also, I want to thank personally each one of you for your kindness and support following It meant a great deal to me, my family, especially my dad, as you showed up and waited in that long line during cowering hours on Friday. What a blessing we have in Keith Redmond and the Redmond funeral. Thank you all as well for your confidence in electing me as council president for the last two years. I value your trust, your respect for one another, even when we don't always agree. You've heard me say it over and over, alignment comes from shared values and a shared purpose. I believe we've lived that together, listening to each other's perspective and caring about this community. Our next meeting will be November 6th, and I want to thank each of you for your service and commitment to this community. Mr. Fioka?
Please bow your head. Heavenly Father, thank you for gathering us today. Please guide our discussions and grant us wisdom to make the best decisions. Amen.
No proclamations and commendations, right, Mr. Mayor? Moving along. Approval of the October 9th regular city council meeting minutes.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Those minutes are approved. We also have the approval of the September 11th regular city council meetings.
Moved to approve.
Moved, moved and seconded. Oh, they were amended. Thank you, Mrs. Madrum. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Those minutes are approved as amended. Public comment period. At this time, if there's anyone, we ask for comments from the audience. Should you wish to make any, please raise your hand to be recognized by the president of council. Seeing none. Mayor's report. Mayor Kerbonnik.
Thank you, Mr. Fel, thank you, Mr. Feldman. Just a couple of things. After a long journey with this, ReWorks is going to open their new facility in the current location that it was, but it's really a big improvement. This is their collection area. It will be opened up some more hours than what it is currently right now. Really, we've only operated like on Thursdays and so forth like that, so you're going to see a much bigger improvement as far as service is concerned. They're now on to the next phase of building the administrative offices over there. They have been housed in the Summa County Health Department on West Market Street for a long time, longer than what they thought. So it's going to be a great addition here to the City of Stowe, but to our residents, ReWorks, like I said, you're going to have some more opportunity and a lot nicer facility to where you're not going to get wet and be able to use that service. So we welcome them, starting on Monday at that new location or actually new building in the same location. This Wednesday coming up, and I see Ms. Sinatra already has left, but she's been a great driving force to our new Halloween bash here that's going to happen at City Hall. It's from 11 to 2 this coming Wednesday, October 29th. This is really a joint effort. We're opening it up to the public. Where you're seeing all the chairs right now will be a giant maze for the kids to enjoy. And also too, it's also an employee appreciation, three hours there. Our city hall will remain open, be a soft opening, but we'll still be servicing our customers and, but we'll be having this Halloween bash. So if you have the opportunity to stop by anywhere from 11 to 2, please do so. Jen and her crew have put in a tremendous amount of time and I appreciate that. Last but not least, and not a good note, received today, if funding does not come from the federal government, and I, I find, the only reason why I'm sharing this, I find it a very shocking number, SNAP benefits would go ahead and be gone if, if we can't go ahead as federal government and go ahead and move forward. We have 2,026 households in our city that are involved of receiving SNAP benefits, which equates to about 17% of our population. So I just want to make you aware of that, and I did meet yesterday with the food bank and also too with the Salvation Army. So we're making some plans if need to be. Even if we don't, we have some plans to go ahead and address some need in this area, whether it's Talmadge Cog Falls, Stowe, Hudson, Monroe Falls, Silver Lake, of working together and looking at a program that will not cost any of the city any money, but will be able to provide some great relief to them. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor Kerbonnik. Questions for the mayor? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda, any old business, any old business to come before council? I thought somebody raised their hand down there. No, 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 no old business. New business before council. I would like to introduce ordinance 2025-210 and ask the clerk to please read it by its title.
Ordinance 2025-210. An ordinance confirming the mayor's appointment of Heather Prusha as chief of police of the City, Police Department of the City of Stowe, establishing compensation for said appointee and declaring emergency.
I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Moved and seconded, suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Any discussion? Thank you for waiting and congratulations. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Rio?
Yes.
Fioka?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Baranek?
Yeah.
McIntyre?
Yes.
That ordinance passes and it will take effect according to its terms. Congratulations. Mr. Mayor?
And I'm going to embarrass you as your first public thing. Can you come up and just make a couple of comments to our public and to our residents? And congratulations to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to council's support. And you know, I've been at Stowe for, for 20 years and I have a tough act to follow. So I look very forward to serving this community, this community that I have grown to love. So thank you very much.
And again, well, there'll be more words for Chief Feldman as we move along his journey. So we're not going to do the roast tonight, Chief, so you're, you're free. So Chief Lang started it on Monday, but we'll make sure that, thank you though, thank you for your service too.
Thank you, Chief Feldman. We appreciate everything you've done for the city. All right, moving along. Disposition of ordinances and resolutions. I'd like to entertain a motion to take resolution 2025-147, the capital improvement plan, from the table.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Resolution 2025-147 is now back before council for consideration. I'd like, resolution 2025-147 is now before council for its third reading. Will the clerk please read it by its title?
2025-147, a resolution pursuant to Article 22 of the Charter of the City of Stowe, ratify an approval of the 2026 capital improvement plan and declare an emergency.
Counsel, we may now discuss any, any amendments, items or things we need to make sure we get this handled correctly. Mr. McIntyre?
Thanks for the memo earlier. Obviously, I understand the things that are coming through there. I'm not, I'm not going to get into the details tonight. Obviously, this is a living document, so council can amend this at any time. I know there's some planning preparations on the engineering in the city, so we'll see what comes of that. And I mean, I feel confident that we'll be making some amendments in the coming, in the coming months. I am passionate about getting some sidewalks done and connecting some areas that need to be connected in the community, but I'll be fully supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Second. Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Other comments? Yes, Mr. Herman?
Yes, I also agree and would note that I appreciate the revisions that were made so that we can adopt the plan version two as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Anybody else? I just, I'll make a quick comment on the memo, Mr. Jones and Mrs. Ruvay. I appreciate it. I went back and got the Stowe connectivity plan document, and it looks like we've already got one, three, and five done. You've got public comment on this document, you've got locations on this document, and you've got some things from the engineer from March 10th, 2022. So thank you, but when you read this and you read this, there's some overlap, so.
So if I may, you just said 2022. So obviously, we're going into 2026, and so correct me if I'm wrong, Engineer Jones, but what we would need to do is as things are presented and you guys say, hey, yeah, let's take this particular section and let's go with it, you're going to need to get public comment again. So that's where we're saying, hey, let's revisit that for sure. That may be a great starting point for where you guys may want to start and where we can start planning estimates, you know, and what it would cost to do the various areas. But you'll still need to get public comment from those residents in those areas for them to say they, they wish to have a sidewalk or not.
Yeah, I don't disagree, but I'm reading this document, which we paid significant dollars for, identified locations to fill in missing links. Bullet point two, identified through community feedback, loop concept, and AMATS data. So I believe there's some valuable stuff in here from 2022.
Absolutely agree. And some of the other things we now need to take into consideration is the utilities coming through. As I understand it, you just had some sidewalks done in a couple of areas where the utilities may now need to disrupt that a little bit. So again, yes, just like the document's living, so is the project going to be living because we've got to work around, obviously, are roads going in or not? Is a roundabout going in? Where are the utilities headed next? So, so it will all just be well thought out, and that was the point of my memo, was to let you know that we will keep, keep it well thought out and intentional throughout the process.
Thank you, Mrs. Ruvay. Any other comments?
I move to adopt version two, the amended version two.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt version two. Any discussion?
Hold on. Do we need to make, is this a motion to amend the version two then? Do we need to make the motion to amend the version two first?
You would, because the version two hasn't been amended.
Let me revise my motion to, I'll move to amend 2025-147 to version two.
Second.
Moved and seconded to amend 2025-147 to version two. Any more discussion? Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Rio?
Yes.
Fioka?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Baranek?
Yeah.
McIntyre?
Yes.
I move to adopt 2025-147 as amended.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Rio?
Yes.
Fioka?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Baranek?
Yeah.
McIntyre?
Yes.
That resolution passes and will take effect according to its terms. Item B, I'd like to introduce ordinance 2025-182 and ask the clerk to please read it by its title.
2025-182, an ordinance amending certain sections of COS, particularly 921 COS entitled water systems fees and user charges to increase certain water rate fees and for users of the City of Stowe's water system.
That will signify its second reading. I believe we can have some discussion. Am I right, Mr. Riley?
Yeah, absolutely.
And we can do that now, correct? I just know the water superintendent's here. I know you sat through many of these. I'm already late. I don't know if you want to come up and say this, council, it's going to be on its third reading, or you don't want to save it for the third reading. It's up, Mr. Ren, Mr. Mayor. It's up to you. Mr. Ren?
Yeah, he's basically here just to answer any questions that individual council members would have.
All right, and you've been here the last two times. I'll ask a couple of questions since I'm already over time, right? We've had 74 water breaks this year?
We're over 76 now.
That's 76. And that's a huge increase from all over 2024, correct?
Yeah, we had a total of 34 in 2024.
Part of that has contributed to what?
Aging infrastructure mainly. Tower being down, the older infrastructure couldn't handle pressure surges, which led to more breaks.
Mr. Feldman, if I could add to your question?
Sure.
Prior to the 76 this year, how many did we have last year?
Thirty-four.
So, so really, the biggest contributing factor was the water tower being down.
We had 25 from the water tower.
From the water tower. So that was probably the biggest contributing factor this year. How many have we had since the water tower's back up in operation? Twelve. And where are those, where are those mostly taking place at?
Mostly on the 1956, 1960 lines, which would be in the older section of town.
So center of town?
Yeah.
So, thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Other comments? I know I've got one. I did some, and maybe I'm wrong, Mrs. Ruvay or Miss, somebody may have to tell me I'm incorrect. I, I did some calculations and you can let me know if this was right. The increase in 20, so this is an incremental increase, correct? So the twenty-six increase, just, I'm not talking all the different, I'm talking about for the person who has water coming to their house, right? The resident. It's two dollars and ninety-seven cents. Am I correct?
Yes.
Then in twenty-seven, we throw another dollar ten onto that, and it's three dollars and ninety-six increase total, right?
Correct.
And then I didn't go on to twenty-eight, twenty-nine, or thirty. But this increase is going to help us do what?
Replace the water mains, infrastructure, pay back debt if we have to build a second tower, depending on what the outcome of a study is.
So I remember your predecessor showed me some pictures of some Ward Three water lines over here, Samira. They didn't look very good.
No, they're not. You could have the older nineteen fifty-six unlined cast. It could be a six-inch diameter main, but the ID of it might be two to three inches because of all the buildup minerals inside the line.
Operational costs are increasing. What's the cost of a fire hydrant now? Because we just put four right behind the school and they cost a lot of money.
You're looking at about thirty-eight hundred dollars per hydrant, which is up a thousand dollars from over three years.
And when we put water lines in, we put hydrants in, correct? All right. I think I'm good. Thank you, and we appreciate you. Any other questions? I don't want to hog all the time. Yes, Mr. McIntyre?
I just, it's not really a question more than it is a comment, obviously. If this, let's just say for argument's sake, this was to pass tonight. How many shovel-ready projects are sitting up in the water department's office right now that we can say we're ready to move forward with? If we're going to raise the rates on residents, including residents on fixed income, how prepared are we and how ready are we to just start doing this work? Because it seems like there's nothing on the shovel-ready that's ready to go. Seems like we plan these as we need these. Is that correct?
Yeah. We have to plan around all the fiber optics going in. We've had a couple that were designed and had to be redesigned because of where the fiber was going. So we can only do what we can do.
It's our right away. How are we planning around other facility owners? How are they not planning around ours? It's our right away. That's a question for another day. You answered my question. You know, it piggybacks along with the fact that we're talking about possibly eliminating taxes, you know, and losing money here, but then we're going to raise the rates here. Then we're talking about possibly raising income tax. I mean, I appreciate what we're trying to do here, but it seems like every time we run into these issues, the first thing we do is say we got to raise this, we got to raise this, and there's never, ever an alternative. So again, these are all questions for another day. I just wanted everyone to know that, like, as much as we talk about raising these rates, we're not even ready to do the work. So thank you.
If I may?
Go ahead, Mrs. Revay.
Keep in mind, we are not making ourselves whole in this fund, so we can't prepare to do work that we don't have funding for. And and we also need to have some kind of increase. I'm not saying you have to be married to what we proposed or what Revtell has proposed. This increase has to keep the peace with the EPA, okay? Or they could start telling us, you're not even going to run your own water system anymore. So that's that's an angle you need to keep looking at. I get the frustration of, like, we're not shovel-ready, but you can't be shovel-ready when you're behind on manpower because we kind of have to keep catching up on the brakes and everything else that's happening that we haven't been able to just fix as a whole. So it, and if you notice, the rates are going to taper off, you know, it's a little bit of a shock in the beginning, and it's going to taper off after that. And that should hopefully get us back to square, to where this is a self-sustaining, a self-sustaining system. I mean, if you chose to take on the system, you had to chose to take on the responsibility of the system with it. And I know you may not have been here when that all happened, but, you know.
The system was awful that was handed to us. Anything the county touches is awful. Our sanitary sewer system, I'm sure if we had them in here. But that, again, these are all questions for another day. I understand it. We borrow from the capital improvement fund to pay for the golf course, but the golf course doesn't serve every tax-paying citizen in the community. So we need to look at other alternatives and everything else. We got to, we don't, we can't do this because we didn't hire people. Okay, we'll hire a consultant that can provide those services when we need it, as opposed to having somebody on for twenty years paying salary plus benefits. There's other options instead of raising rates and hiring people all the time, so. But I move to to move on to the next item.
We will. I just wanted to respect your time and appreciated you being here the two previous times and the third time to give us a little bit of the perspective from the superintendent. So thank you for being here and it'll be, that's its second reading. Any other comments before we move along? All right, thank you. That will designate ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one eighty-two, second reading. I'd like to, item C, I'd like to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one ninety-seven. Ask the clerk to please read it by its title.
Twenty twenty-five one ninety-seven, annual appropriation ordinance providing for the expenses of the city of Stowe for the year twenty twenty-six and declaring emergency.
That will constitute twenty twenty-five dash one ninety-seven's second reading. I'd like to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two hundred and ask the clerk to please read it by its title.
Twenty twenty-five two hundred, an ordinance enacted pursuant to section one one three seven oh eight COS entitled amendments to provide for the amendment of the zoning districts map and zoning districts by reclassifying from R two residential to C four general business of thirty-six oh five and thirty-six twenty-five Marsh Road, parcel number fifty-six dash one four one four one, in the city of Stowe, Ohio, authorizing amendment of the zoning districts map.
That will constitute ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two hundred's second reading. Like to introduce item E, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two oh three and ask the clerk to please read it by its title.
Twenty twenty-five dash two oh three, an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty twenty-five sixty-eight, increasing the authorization of expenditures for, with Falls Wave Equipment Company, Inc., for repair parts and services for use by the fire department without the necessity of public bids and declaring emergency.
I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Moved and seconded to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Any discussion? Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Riel?
Yes.
Cop, or Dioka?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Baranek?
Yeah.
McIntyre?
Yes.
That ordinance passes and will take effect according to its terms. I'd like to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two oh four and ask the clerk to please read it by its title.
Twenty twenty-five dash two oh four, an ordinance allocating supplement overtime funds from the city of Stowe budget for overtime expenditures for the fire department in twenty twenty-five and declaring emergency.
I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Moved and seconded to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
I move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Any discussion? Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Riel?
Yes.
Dioka?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Baranek?
Yeah.
McIntyre?
Yes.
That ordinance passes and will take effect according to its terms. I'd like to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two oh five, item G, and ask the clerk to please read it by its title.
Twenty twenty-five dash two oh five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to make and enter into contracts with Richard Insurance Services, Inc., and Love Insurance Agency for general insurance coverage and declaring emergency.
I move to suspend the rules.
Moved and seconded to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Any discussion? Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Riel?
Yes.
Dioka?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Baranek?
Yeah.
McIntyre?
Yes.
That ordinance passes and will take effect according to its terms. Item H, I'd like to introduce resolution twenty twenty-five dash two oh six and ask the clerk to please read it by its title.
Twenty twenty-five dash two oh six, a resolution granting a conditional zoning certificate to Jonathan Marshall applicant on behalf of Himalayan Aura Properties LLC, owner on the property located at twenty-nine fifty Graham Road, parcel number fifty-six dash one six one four two.
Second.
Moved and seconded to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Any discussion? Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Riel?
Yes.
Dioka?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Baranek?
Yeah.
McIntyre?
Yes.
That resolution passes and will take effect according to its terms. Item I, I'd like to introduce resolution twenty twenty-five dash two oh seven and ask the clerk to please read it by its title.
Twenty twenty-five dash two oh seven, a resolution granting signed variance approval to Mudser Mama applicant on behalf of Saint Gobin Ceramics and Plastics, Inc., owner on the property located at thirty-eight forty Fish Creek Road, parcel number fifty-six dash oh five seven nine six.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Moved and seconded to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Any discussion? Mr. Baranek?
Yes, I just want to bring forward that we didn't have any representation for this applicant tonight at the planning, planning committee or at the main committee. And, you know, if you're coming in and applying for a variance, you should at least respect council and respect the city and at least show up and and give us your own personal reasoning for that.
Thank you, Mr. Baranek. Other comments? Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?